Okay, time is 6:05. We'd like to welcome you to tonight's board meeting. At this time, I'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Joe, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the Constitution of America, with the presence of the President, the Vice President, and the Deputy Secretary of State.
Please remain standing for a moment.
Yeah, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Any changes to the agenda, sir?
Good evening, Mr. President and trustees and members of the audience. No, sir, there are no changes to your agenda.
Okay, under board recognition?
Under board recognition, Mr. President, trustees, we do have a recognition of Donna Independent School District, the ISD volunteers, and to make that presentation, I'll call on our Director for Parental Involvement, Mr. Tomas Tames. Mr. Tames?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Mr. Castillo. This evening, it gives me a pleasure to recognize our volunteers in our district. These are volunteers, parents, and community volunteers that assist us at the district throughout the year at the parent centers. Each year, a team of dedicated parent and community volunteers contribute numerous hours of their personal time to assist our campuses and districts in a variety of ways. Donna Independent School District greatly appreciates the valuable contributions of all the volunteers throughout the school year and applauds their commitment to our school community. Donna ISD Parental Involvement Department provides a variety of opportunities for parents to become involved in our district. One important component of the Parental Involvement Department is a volunteer program. Volunteers assist us, assist campuses district-wide in a variety of areas such as helping in school special events, participating in school or district committees, assisting in the classroom and in the workroom, parent centers, making copies, cutting, laminating, et cetera, chaperoning in school field trips or other school events, helping out in the school libraries, decorating the school for special events, and even tutoring students. All district parent center volunteers were recognized on April 21st, 2017 during a volunteer appreciation breakfast which was held at Stanky Elementary. Little history on the recognition system that we have in place here in our district. In 2013, we established a four-tiered system within the parental department to recognize the valuable time and effort our volunteers provide to our Donna ISD schools. The system consists of the following. We have what we call bronze volunteers, volunteers that assist at the schools up to 100 hours throughout the year. Silver volunteers from 100 to 500 hours of volunteer time. And then we have what we are acknowledging tonight, our gold volunteers, between 500 and 1,000 hours of volunteer time. And then we have our platinum volunteers, which are volunteers that exceed over 1,000 hours within the school year. As part of the district's parental department's initiative, aside from the volunteer appreciation breakfast, all the volunteers who have met or exceeded the 500 hours, which are our gold and our platinum volunteers that you see here tonight, you know, who have exceeded the 500 hours of dedicated volunteer service to our district, they're presented with a plaque during a school board meeting and is usually the last school board meeting at the end of the school year. So, at this time, it is with great pride that I present you the 2016-2017 Gold and Platinum Volunteers. And volunteers, if you can please, you are here tonight to receive a plaque, if you can please stand up. Por favor, para ponerse de pie. At this time, will the parental involvement staff that is here tonight, will you also please rise so we can acknowledge you? Parent educators? Ms. Guevara, can you come forward, please? Ms. Guevara, Parental Involvement Secretary? And we're gonna go ahead and begin with our gold volunteers, and I'm gonna read you the summary of what the plaque, each of the plaques says. It says, "An appreciation to the name of our volunteer for your dedicated commitment to the parental involvement program. Thank you for your service to the children of Donna ISD, 2016-2017." And we're going to begin with our gold volunteers, okay? And our gold volunteers, we had our first gold volunteer, we have Alejandra Lopez, Salceda Middle School. Ms. Valhein, can you assist us? All our volunteers that are receiving plaques tonight, they were aware and they were called and some of them, for whatever reason or another, they could not make it tonight, but we still want to acknowledge them. Giselle Mesa, Salazar Elementary. Carmela Garcia, Salinas Elementary. We have Rosario Vazquez, Salceda Middle School. Maria DaCosta, Salinas Elementary. Yolanda Bautista, Run Elementary. Alejandrina De La Garza, Salceda Middle School. Maria Medina, Guzman Elementary. Norma Villegas, Salinas Elementary. Mirna Salinas, Ochoa Elementary. Deborah Lozoya, Ochoa Elementary. Maria Cristina Arredondo, Salceda Middle School. Flor Castillo, Rivas Elementary. Samira Maldonado, Salceda Middle School. Santos Luna, Veterans Middle School. Claudia Barajas, Salazar Elementary. Leti Castro, Price Elementary. Mirta Vazquez, Guzman Elementary. Anel Herrera, Garza Elementary. Veronica Castro, Rivas Elementary. Angel Estevez, Donna High School. Tomasa Martinez, Rivas Elementary. Rachel Torres, Donna High School. Maricela Avalos, Guzman Elementary. And we will begin with Lidia Salcedo from Salinas Elementary. And, yes, those are our gold volunteers for Donna ISD. Platinum volunteer. Round of applause for these ladies and gentlemen. Alondra Vargas, Salinas Elementary. Sorangel Vargas, Salinas Elementary. Nancy Ramirez Lara, Donna High School. Priscilla Ruth Rivera, Donna High School. Baldilio Ariaga, Ochoa Elementary. Rosa Ibarra Ariaga, Ochoa Elementary. Rosie Reyes, Lenore Elementary. Gracie Hooks, Run Elementary. And we have Mercedes Rojas from Price Elementary. And these are our gold or our platinum volunteers for Donna ISD. Round of applause. Just like to say a few words on our volunteers, on our gold and platinum volunteers. A little data as far as our volunteer program is concerned. We have a total of, in volunteer hours, when our volunteers go to the campuses, they sign in at the parent center, they have a log, sign in and sign out, so we keep track of the hours that they, that's how we come up with the total amount of hours throughout the school year. This year, our total volunteers, which is our bronze, silver, gold, and platinum volunteers, volunteered a total of 54,448 hours and a half, okay? 54,448 point, .33 actually. If we would take that number and put a minimum wage value of 725, our total volunteers, our volunteers donated of their time, a total of $394,750.39 to our district. That's in volunteer time, okay? And I'm sure that, you know, there's, this is just a volunteer program in Donna ISD, just what we have at the parental involvement department. There's other programs. You have at the high school, you have the boosters club, you know, the band boosters, you have the quarterback club. You have all different volunteers that are district-wide, okay? And this is just the parental involvement department parent centers program. So, I do applaud our volunteers, our community parents and volunteers that assist us throughout the year. Now, I'd like to especially acknowledge our gold volunteers and our platinum volunteers because 500 hours of volunteer time in a year is a lot of time, okay? A platinum volunteer, 1,000 hours or more is almost a full-time employee, okay? When we look at eight-hour days, okay? So, our gold volunteers, just our 33 people, 34 people that we had in over between 500 and 1,000 hours, they volunteered a total of 22,622 hours, okay, to our district, a total of contribution at 725 an hour of $164,000 to our district, just in our gold volunteers that we acknowledge here tonight. Our platinum volunteers consisted of 11 people, okay? 11 people, 11 volunteers in our district. These 11 volunteers contributed 15,683 hours to our district. Again, at 725 an hour, that's $113,706 in in-kind contribution. So, together, our gold and our platinum volunteers donated $277,716 worth of personal time volunteering to our schools and to our district. So, you know, they do deserve an acknowledgement in public, you know? Thank you for everything you do, volunteers, throughout the school year. Gracias por todo el apoyo que nos dan durante el año escolar. Los centros de padres son, ustedes son parte de nuestro centro de padres en el distrito. Y les doy gracias de todo corazón y de parte de la administración del distrito. Gracias por todo su tiempo, todo su trabajo que hacen durante el año escolar. Les agradecemos todo su apoyo y muchas gracias. And I have about a three-minute slideshow that I'd like to share, hopefully the sound is working on this, for our volunteer program for this year. We have our volunteers in action in the school district, so we're gonna go ahead and play a brief slideshow. And that song was selected because, in the eyes of our children, which is who we all are here for, you know, it's children singing to parents. And these ladies and gentlemen that volunteer every day at our schools or every other day, you know, sometimes a whole day, sometimes half-days, whenever they can, they do it with heart, and that is what a volunteer is. It's all heart, and again, we thank ladies and gentlemen for everything they do for our district and for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tames. Mr. President and trustees, going into item number two under board recognition, we have recognition of campus results for the academic competition of elementary schools, also known as ACES. As you well know, that from middle school up through high school, they are known as University Intercollegiate League, which is known as UIO Academics. Because we don't have anything in elementary that recognizes that, this is what takes a place to get them a little jumpstart. So, again, to make the recognition, we'll call on Mr. Tames, Director of Parental Involvement, and also oversees the ACE program, assisted by Ms. Velma Regan. Mr. Tames?
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. The ACES program, it's the academic competition of elementary schools. What we have is a program of elementary student competition. Competition consists of the following events. We have two teams, seven campuses, seven elementary campuses competing in one team, we call the maroon team, another team, the gold team, and other seven campuses competing against each other, are the students. The competition consists of the following events. We have storytelling, K through second, English and Spanish. We have oral reading, third through fifth, English and Spanish. We have spelling, K through second, English and Spanish, and third through fifth, English only. We have ready writing, third through fifth, English and Spanish. Mathematics, K through second, English. Number sense, third through fifth, which is a higher-level math. We have science, third through fifth grade, English and Spanish. And then we have four technology competitions. We have technology prezzi presentation, second and fifth. Technology weebly, second and fifth. Technology storybird, second grade, and technology we video, fifth grade. Our competition was held on May 17th, Wednesday, and Saturday, May 20th of this month, this past month, we conducted the ACES competition. Students who placed first through sixth place during these two days, okay? On Wednesday, we had the preliminaries, which were the students competing in the different events, and those events, such as storytelling and oral reading and the technology prezzi, had a finals competition. The students that made it to the finals competed again on Saturday. And then we held other events on Saturday, which were the science and the music memory. These events were held on, again, on Wednesday and then on Saturday, and the students that placed during these two days were already awarded at Stanky Elementary, they were awarded their medals for first through sixth place for the maroon team. At Stanky, it was the gold team, and the maroon team was at Garza, or at Singletary Elementary. And cafeteria is packed. I don't know if you've ever been to an ACES competition on a Saturday, the awards assembly, but it is, you cannot fit students, parents in the cafeterias. They are like overcrowded. And, but it is a worthwhile event because our students do have, you know, they do compete and, of course, they want their parents to go see them, receive their medals. Before announcing the winners, though, I would like to take this time to acknowledge the ACES coaches. There's a lot of things that happen through the ACES event, a lot of things that happen behind the scenes. You know, we have ACES coaches, we have judges, test administrators, we have tabulators, we have teachers, coaches, we have campus coordinators, who are usually our assistant principals, our curriculum specialists.
And that song was selected because, in the eyes of our children, which is who we all are here for, you know, it's children singing to parents. And these ladies and gentlemen that volunteer every day at our schools or every other day, you know, sometimes a whole day, sometimes half-days, whenever they can, they do it with heart, and that is what a volunteer is. It's all heart, and again, we thank ladies and gentlemen for everything they do for our district and for our students. Thank you.
Mr. President and trustees, going into item number two under board recognition. We have recognition of campus results for the academic competition of elementary schools, also known as ACES. As you well know, that from middle school up through high school, they are known as University Intercollegiate League, which is known as UIO Academics. Because we don't have anything in elementary that recognizes that, this is what takes a place to get them a little jumpstart. So, again, to make the recognition, we'll call him Mr. Tames, Director of Parental Involvement and also oversees the ACE program, assisted by Ms. Velma Righed. Mr. Tames?
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. The ACES program, it's the academic competition of elementary schools. What we have is a program of elementary student competition. Competition consists of the following events. We have two teams, seven campuses, seven elementary campuses competing in one team, we call the Maroon Team, another team, the Gold Team, and other seven campuses competing against each other, are the students. The competition consists of the following events. We have storytelling, K through second, English and Spanish. We have oral reading, third through fifth, English and Spanish. We have spelling, K through second, English and Spanish, and third through fifth, English only. We have ready writing, third through fifth, English and Spanish. Mathematics, K through second, English. Number sense, third through fifth, which is a higher-level math. We have science, third through fifth grade, English and Spanish. And then we have four technology competitions. We have Technology Prezi Presentation, second and fifth. Technology Weebly, second and fifth. Technology Storybird, second grade, and Technology Wee Video, fifth grade. Our competition was held on May seventeenth, Wednesday, and Saturday, May twentieth of this month, this past month, we conducted the ACES competition. Students who placed first through sixth place during these two days, okay? On Wednesday, we had the preliminaries, which were the students competing in the different events, and those events, such as storytelling and oral reading and the Technology Prezi, had a finals competition. The students that made it to the finals competed again on Saturday. And then we held other events on Saturday, which were the science and the music memory. These events were held again on Wednesday and then on Saturday, and the students that placed during these two days were already awarded at Stanky Elementary, they were awarded their medals for first through sixth place. For the Maroon Team at Stanky, it was the Gold Team, and the Maroon Team was at Singletary Elementary. And cafeteria is packed. I don't know if you've ever been to an ACES competition on a Saturday, the awards assembly, but it is, you cannot fit students, parents in the cafeterias. They are like overcrowded. And, but it is a worthwhile event because our students do have, you know, they do compete and, of course, they want their parents to go see them, receive their medals. Before announcing the winners, though, I would like to take this time to acknowledge the ACES coaches. There's a lot of things that happen through the ACES event, a lot of things that happen behind the scenes. You know, we have ACES coaches, we have judges, test administrators, we have tabulators, we have teachers, coaches, we have campus coordinators, who are usually our assistant principals, our curriculum specialists, or the counselors, or in some cases, librarians. We have principals, central office staff, the parental involvement department, the custodial department, the transportation department, security officers, we have parents, and especially, we have our Donna ISD elementary students, okay? So, all of these entities play a part in our event, in our ACES event. In addition, we'd like to thank the hosting principals, okay? The hosting principals, Ms. Griselda Álvarez from Stanky Elementary, and Mr. Christopher Park for hosting the event this year. So, a round of applause to our two hosting principals and their staff. Their personnel, along with the parental staff, did an outstanding job in providing assistance and ensuring a smooth operation throughout both days of the event. Without the principals and their staff, this event would not have been possible. And now, we are ready to award the trophies. And we're gonna start with Maroon. The first, or the third place, is that third? Third. Okay, third place, we have Casares Elementary and the Maroon Team with four hundred seventy-five point one points. Second place was Salazar Elementary with five hundred twenty-three point five points. And in first place, we have Munoz Elementary with five hundred seventy-five points. Now, we have the trophies for our Gold Team. Third place, we have Lenora Elementary with three hundred twenty point five points. In second place, we have Salinas Elementary with five hundred four points. And in first place, we have Adama Elementary with nine hundred point eight points. Again, a round of applause to our first to the third-place winner.
Congratulations.
I know that trophy was too big, y'all.
How are you? How are you doing?
Congratulations.
Topic is, "Thank You."
Thank you.
Is that what it is?
Good evening. Linda Estrada, Donna TSTNA president. Just here before you guys to, first of all, Mr. Castillo, thank you. Thank you for the TAs of the Year, the Bus Drivers of the Year, Auxiliary. It was, I was just beyond emotional on Thursday when everybody was getting their awards. Mr. Castillo, you said it would happen, and you made it happen, so thank you for being that change. I do, I have had a lot of positive comments, and that's the key word here, it's positive, which is, that's all it's meant to be, is to move this district forward in a positive way. Thank you for the directors and the administrators that also helped with this, Ms. Righed, Mr. Villanueva, Sandy, Ms., did I mention, Mr. Rana and Ms. Belinda Cruz. It was just awesome, guys. It was really awesome, and thank you board for supporting them. It may not mean a lot to a lot of people, but to them, it really did mean a lot, because I truly do believe in that it truly takes a village to raise a child, and we all are part of a puzzle, and we all fit together, and one's missing, you know, you can't complete that puzzle. So, I do wanna thank you. I thank you, thank you. Also, principals for participating and, you know, and submitting your nominees. So, again, thank you so much for everything. Y'all have a good summer.
Superintendent's report?
Mr. President and trustees, item number one, Superintendent's report, that we have reported on approval of designation, or rather, designation for TA, by TA for Donna High School and Donna North High School, to operate as Texas Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics, otherwise known as TSTEM, academies for the 2017-2018 school year. And I did wanna make this known as a report to trustees, because we discussed this matter sometime back, and in your package, you do have a letter that was sent to myself and also to the principals and to our point of contact, Ms. Maria Ben Court, indicating that both Donna High School and Donna North have been accepted as a TSTEM Academy for the following year. And so, I think that's something very important that we've talked about. Our campus, as we've said, we're moving and we're getting, we're going in the right direction. We're also looking forward to completing the application on early college high school, and that will take part probably the first week in August. That's due December thirty-first. Our goal is to complete that by the end of November. But trustees, this is a report only, but you have that evidence there before you. Both campuses obviously have been preparing, and as we speak right now, they have a cohort group in summer school known as the TSTEM Bridge to make the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, where both, respectively, each campus will begin their cohort group ninth grade this fall. So, again, trustees, on this one, if you have a question or comment, this was as a report.
Any questions?
I just wanna make a real quick statement. Thank you for all those, Ms. Ben Court, for putting this together, Mr. Castillo, for pursuing this idea that we had, and making that dream become a vision, a vision become a dream, and, you know, it's gonna be good things for our kids. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. President and trustees, item number two, continuing with Superintendent's report, we have a presentation on future construction of Project Highway sixty-eight. We do have Mr. Margio Maldonado from TexDOT, which is, and also Mr. Pilar Rodriguez, Idagro County. Are y'all present here? They're gonna make a presentation, and like anything else, as we mentioned, we hear about this, we hear about the new construction, we hear, well, where's it gonna happen? I do wanna thank Ms. Righed for coordinating this and bringing the gentleman representing TexDOT and Idagro County to give us a slide presentation, a short presentation regarding this future highway that's gonna go through Donna ISD. So, gentlemen?
Good evening, Superintendent, trustees. My presentation this evening is for SH sixty-eight. Go ahead and begin with the presentation with an introduction. My name is Margil Maldonado. I work for the Tex Department Transportation. I'm going on my thirteenth year working for the department. And so, we wanna go ahead and just start with this first slide here. We, like I said, I'm the project manager for TexDOT's site for this project. In addition to this project, we do have various locations where, if anybody's interested on this project, you can find some information on it on the screen. You do have a lot of information here, some links here, www.tech.gov, keyword, search sixty-eight. On that site, you'll be able to see at least two links on there with some information that we have put up online. If you wanted to take a visit and look at the schematic rolls, there's two places that you can go to to see these. You can go to the main office at TexDOT, located on, here on I-two, six hundred west I-two. I just asked for myself, and I'll be more than happy to talk with anybody there. We also have a project office that is available, that's been in use for the past couple of years. That project office is being manned by our design consultant, RJ Rivera and Associates. As part of that project office, we do have a hotline, nine-five-six-four-six-zero-nine-two-nine-nine. That phone number is available six days out of the week, from eight o'clock AM to eight PM. If you have any questions, again, if you can't get ahold of me, this is available for the public to use. That office is also located on forty-seven-eleven South Alamo Road, Suite one-oh-six. We do have a big sign out there, so it's easily visible to the public. And if you also wanted to get ahold of our design consultants, we do have an email address available, it's shsixtyeight@rjrivera.com. So, just a quick little look at the agenda that we have tonight. I'm just gonna kinda go quickly through a background of this project. We'll kinda briefly go through the evaluation process that we used to get to the point that we are at today with this project. We'll look at the three reasonable alternatives that we're looking at right now. We'll look at the proposed typical section for SH sixty-eight, and we'll look at some of the public outreach that we've done up to this point, and look at the current status, and then we'll look at the next steps. So, moving on to the background, basically, for any projects that TexDOT proposes, we need basically, we need to justify, and so we put out there a purpose and need. In this case, the purpose of this project was to improve north-south mobility and increase travel capacity in the area, and to provide an alternate hurricane evacuation route. And basically, the purpose of that was because we need to address a need, and the need out there was that we did lack a sufficient north-south mobility and that additional hurricane evacuation route. So, on the screen here, you've got a couple of maps here, and we'll go through the kind of the background of this project. Back in 2014, we did have a couple of public meetings. One was held at the Edinburgh Condom Edmonds High School, and then another one was held at Donna North High School. At those two meetings, we went and proposed, on the left-hand side, a route that we thought would be the preferred alternative, and that's what you see in orange here. After that public, after those two public meets, we did receive a lot of public input, and we were able to look at the impacts that that route had. And so, between 2014 and 2016, we made the decision to go ahead and, instead of pursuing an environmental assessment document, we said, we'll go ahead and make this an environmental impact statement. And so, what we did is, we went to the public at our next public scoping meeting, and that was on March fifteenth, 2016. And that's the map on the right, where we showed the public these additional routes here. You do have the I-sixty-nine, US-two-eight-one. We have the nine-oh-seven, the 2014 Modified, the 2014 Public Scoping Meeting Route. We do have the fourteen-twenty-three, which is Valverde, and we also have the four-ninety-three. What we did also is, we did increase the study area, which is bounded in that yellow rectangle. And so, after that meeting, of course, we took up public input, and we also get some impacts, and as a result of that public input, we added four more routes to this. And so, you can see that on the left. You've got the Tower Road option, you've got the 2014 Modified Two, which is in purple, you have the fourteen-twenty-three Modified, which is a goalie road option, and then we had the four-ninety-three Modified. All these were looked at at, you know, six hundred foot wide, and that's what we, from the very preliminaries, we looked at six hundred foot wide corridors. And so, from that point on, we went into what's called Step One of the evaluation process. We looked at a total of ten corridors, again, at six hundred foot, and so that's what you're seeing on the right of that spaghetti plot on that right map. So, as I said before, Step One was to screen against the purpose and need, and basically, we looked at the ten routes, and to see which ones met the purpose and need. And so, as you're seeing here on the screen, on the very left-hand column is showing the purpose and need, basically, and in the top row shows all the routes, the multicolored squares on the top indicate the routes. Everything under that, basically, is a representation of if they did meet the need and purpose. So, then Step Two, basically, is we're gonna screen against critical issues. So, keep in mind that when we looked at critical issues here on this project, we looked at them, but we had to keep that design within design criteria, so it was kind of a challenge to make this work. Going through these, we did have about nine criteria that we were looking at here of the critical issues, airports, public parks, cemeteries, churches, hazmat location, jail complexes, national wildlife refuges, public facilities, and state antiquity landmarks. And so, we took these to Step Two, like I said before. What we ended up doing is, a couple of these did hit some of the critical issues, and so we replaced them with a couple of other ones. And so, the ones that we did replace was the nine-oh-seven PSM, and we replaced that with the one that is in green here, which is called the FM-nine-oh-seven Modified. The other one that did get replaced was a four-ninety-three PSM, and that was replaced by the FM-four-ninety-three Modified Two, which is shown in purple. And so, again, just like the previous, we did put it against a screening matrix, and as part of Step Two, again, here, you have all the critical issues on the left-hand column, and on the top multicolored boxes here, those represent all the routes that we're looking at at this point. As you can see, some of these in red were the issues that were, the critical issues that were impacted by the route. So, in this case, nine-oh-seven, you had a national wildlife refuge, so that's why we had to kind of modify that one. And so, the next step is Step Three, which is the, it was part of the evaluation matrix. We took the six hundred foot corridors that we'd been looking up to this point, and we shrunk those down to three hundred, three hundred fifty to four hundred foot wide corridors. And so, we looked at goals that we're trying to meet with these routes, and so there were six of them here, and within those six, there was a total of sixty-four sub-criterias that we also had to look at as well. So, going through this list here, we were trying to meet safety goals, mobility goals, community impact, feasibility of design, cost effectiveness, and economic factors. And like I said, there were sixty-four sub-criterias within those six. And again, another screening matrix showing here the routes on the top row and the goals here. So, this map, basically, is showing you, it's a conglomeration of the sixty-four sub-criteria, and basically, we summarize that into the different colors that you see here. It's kind of a heat map. As you can see here, there's, on the right-hand side and on the left-hand side, there's a couple of these routes that had red squares on those, so those basically dropped out. What you're left is, left was the ones in the middle. And as you can see, green here was more desirable, neutral was yellow, and the less desirable routes here represent the less desirable criteria. And so, after we went through and put these through the matrix, we went ahead and calculated all the impacts, and we came up with three routes that we think are the ones that we're at this point looking at. So, it's the 2014 PSM, which was the original route that we proposed back in 2014, the Modified 2014, and the fourteen-twenty-three, which is Valverde. So, you can see here on the map here, there's that purple route, the orange route, and then the pink route. And so, that's at this point right now is the three routes that we're looking at, and we're doing further study. Kind of changing gears a little bit, we included this slide in here as a, you know, just to kind of inform the public of what we're envisioning SH sixty-eight to be. If you can imagine going down I-two, you have the main lanes in the middle, and then you have frontage roads on the outside. And so, eventually, that's what you'll see is basically a parallel route to two-eight-one. And so, here is the preliminary for, what we've done is, this route, we're going, we're looking at constructing this route in phases, and right now, just like everybody else, what I tell everybody is, you know, when you and your family have a budget, at this point, we're going to approach this in a phased way. So, right now, we have, we are, when we do go to construction, we'll start out with Phase One, and the limits from Phase One are from eighty-three to nineteen-twenty-five, and that would be the construction of the frontage roads. That has, that's fully funded right now for right-of-way and for construction. The second phase would be from nineteen-twenty-five all the way to two-eight-one, or connects back to two-eight-one, and again, that's the continuation of the frontage roads. And the next slide here is basically where we come in and build the main lanes. The limits from that are from, basically, the I-two all the way to I-sixty-nine C, which is two-eight-one. limits from that are from, basically, the I-2 all the way to I-69C, which is 281. Summarizing here, what we had, we had a public meeting back in January of this year, January 3rd of this year. We had a lot of input, and we had a lot of people showed up. We had 400 people, as a matter of fact, show up, leaving 100 comments. And I think that, you know, that's outstanding. It's unheard of, basically, as far as, you know, attendance in a project. So, we know that this project is, there's a lot of interest in this project. And so, you know, what we do, you know, not only the interest in the project, but also our efforts to try to get the word out to the public. And so, in some of those things that we've done at this point, we've, you know, we've put out flyers, we've, I know our consultants have gone out there and walked the corridors, talked to people in the neighborhoods, tried to get the word out. I know on our side, we've gone ahead and mailed out postcards periodically. We've taken many, many phone calls. I can, you know, I can, probably 75 to 100 myself, I've taken phone calls, answered emails. So, there's been a lot of interest in this project. Like always, we always put newspaper advertisements just for the public meeting. We've put changeable message signs out there on each of the different routes in the month preceding the public meeting, and that's something that's really unprecedented for the Far District in TechStop. I've never heard that done before, so we hadn't done that. We've even put Facebook advertisements out there, so we're trying our hardest to get the word out to people, and we'll try to make ourselves available to anybody at the office, you know, as much as we can. And just kind of going back here, like I said, the last public meeting was at the Donna North High School, and so, I just want to take the time right now to thank everybody here at the ISD for partnering with TechStop to allow us to use your facilities. If we didn't tell that before, we do thank you for your partnering on that. So, the next steps on SH68, like I said before, we had that public meeting back in 2016. The last public meeting was on January of this year. At this point, what we're doing is, we're taking those three routes that we had said before, and we're doing what's called technical reports on that. And so, our consultants are drafting those technical reports right now. They've, we have about 11 that we need to do, and right now, we're, I think, at number six. And so, they're drafting those up. We're reviewing, I'm sending them back for comments, and they're completing them. Once they do finish the 11, they'll use that to come up with the one route, and that one route will be summarized in what's called the Draft EIS Statement. Once we're finished with that Draft EIS Statement, and we do the schematic, we finish the schematic, we'll go out and have a public meeting, or a public hearing, I'm sorry, and we'll present that to the public so that they know, so they know what route is going to be the final one. And that route will be sent over to our Austin Division, and we'll hopefully get a record decision on that road. And that'll be the official, basically, okay, that this is the road, this is the route that's going to be chosen. Like we said before, we are always interested in taking comments and taking public input. You can always leave comments with us. You can submit written comments, submit it to us at the office, at the public offices that we have. Like I said before, we have email. We can take it by email, sh68@rjrivera.com. You can email myself, maril@maldonado@techstop.gov. Give me a call, 702-6100. I'll try to make myself available as much as possible, meet with people. That's what I've been doing for the last three years, so, you know, don't feel bad. Again, we do have that project office, that project office that's available. And so, anytime anybody, if can get ahold of me, we have that office ready for those, for those who want to go there. Basically, that's pretty much it for the presentation that I had.
When did you say the tentative date for when y'all would know final route?
We're targeting later on this year. We don't have a date, a concrete date right now, but we're targeting later this year.
Like, end of summer, into fall or something?
I think probably fall or winter is looking, we're looking to get.
One of the reasons that this came up, and you probably know this, thank you, Ms. Dunham, for bringing this, is that we, as we were talking about rezoning and just population growth, what is it that you all do to partner, could do to partner with us as a school district to help us understand the impact of the highway on population growth in our district? Is there, I think that's really the big kind of connection here that we were making, and why this feels very important to us to understand as a community?
Well, we always, you know, we're always here for the public to discuss these kind of things. We think that when we do, when this final road probably goes to construction, and we do realize that there's going to be impacts, you know, those are things that we probably can discuss and look at to see what kind of impact you're going to have. You know, I'm not sure if you're talking about economic impacts, or you're talking about just, you know, the people in general in the school districts or that. But if, you know, you have any issues or concerns where the route's going to be, you know, we can always, you know, we can have, you know, KMZ files where you can just plot them on Google Earth, and those will be on top of your, you know, school district maps and things like that, so.
Mr. Maldo, just to recap, our district boundaries on the west side is Tower Road.
Okay.
On the east side, Midway Road.
Okay.
And we go from south to north. Those three final alternatives that we have, those are the three finalists, for lack of better words. Out of those three, how many do you fall between those two roads that I just mentioned, Tower Road and Midway Road?
I'm not sure exactly where Midway Road is, but...
Midway Road is on western coast, towards western coast and Donna.
Okay, yeah, I don't think we're that far. I mean, anything, you know, we're not going past 493.
Okay, so Tower Road and 493, all those three are...
Correct.
So, we're going to get, either way, that's Donna ISD. Okay. That's kind of what we wanted to know.
How close, how close would this proposed highway be coming to Donna North?
Well, if Valverde was the one chosen, it'd be right in front.
It's right there.
Right in front of it, yeah. So, there'll be, I guess, the frontage road?
Right. We would try to avoid it, you know, we're not going to, you know, go and go right through the middle of the school. I mean, we'll try to use that as the existing Valverde as a frontage road. But, I mean, like I said, those are one of the criticals we're trying to avoid.
So, I think it's good. It sounds like this is going to, our district will have to have an ongoing partnership with you all.
Right.
And regular communication to stay up in sync, and so that we have as much information as soon as possible on the front end, in how this will impact our community or students. And I know a lot of people would be, I mean, I know it's hard to get up and down Valverde a lot of times, so there's going to be a lot of benefits, but there's going to be a lot of in-between, right, to get from here to there. So, appreciate your time coming out.
Absolutely. Like I said, if you guys have any questions, we can set up meetings, we can talk to anybody who's interested in, you know...
Mr. Maldonado, is the 2014 PSM the preferred route?
No, we don't have a preferred at this point yet. We're still...
But, answer this question. I mean, you've already bought properties right-ofways south of the Expressway.
No, we haven't. TechStop has not bought any properties, no.
That has not, that is the regional mobility, which is going to tie into this tollway, isn't it?
No. There's, at this point, we don't know. Like I said, we could have, you know, the 907, we could have the PSM, the 2014 PSM route. Those are, you know, it's not really set right now as to if they're going to tie into each other.
Mr. Pilato has his own presentation, so maybe we'll have him to present, he might answer some of our questions. Mr. Rolles?
No, we just need to make sure we have information that we can plan at every time, you know.
Good afternoon or good evening. My name's Pilato Rodriguez. I'm with the Hidalgo County Regional Mobility Authority. And we're a fairly new agency, public agency. We've only been in existence for 10 years. We were created under Chapter 370 of the Transportation Code. We are a political subdivision, so we do have a board of directors, and we have a lot of the same powers that the local government have, with the exception that we're not a taxing entity. We don't have the ability to tax. It's a seven-member Board of Directors. The chairman is appointed by the governor of the state of Texas. Five board members are appointed by the Hidalgo County Commissioners Court, and then one board member, the seventh board member, is appointed by the largest municipality in the county, which happens to be the city of McAllen for Hidalgo County. And so, that's the makeup of the board. And you can see the board members. Our chairman is David De Anda. Our vice chairman is Forrest Runnels. Our secretary of treasures, Ricardo Perez. We have Director Josué Reyes, Director R. David Guerra, Director Aquiles Garza, and Director Alonso Cantu. And so, that's the Board of Directors for the Regional Mobility Authority. This is our master plan. We're focused on mobility projects for the county, and this is what we call the Hidalgo County Loop System. This is the master plan for the next about 30 years. These are projects that the authority is going to be working on. And this is about 120-mile network in the county. It's all expressway-type facility, so like Maril described, it's going to have main lanes, it's going to have frontage roads, it's going to have overpasses, we're going to have interchanges. So, it'll look a lot like Interstate 2. And the purpose is to get goods and services and people to and through the county, and allow those. In our county, we have six international ports of entry along our border with Mexico. One is a ferry, so it really doesn't count, but the others have vehicular traffic, and three of them have truck traffic, which is Anseldeus in a limited form. The far port of entry is a full-service truck facility, and of course, the Progreso Bridge is full-service. And then you have Donna, the Donna Bridge, which is coming online as a truck facility. And so, you can see, we've got a lot of commerce coming across those bridges that we're trying to interface through, get them up to the interstate network, Interstate 2, Interstate 69 Central, Interstate 69 East over in Cameron County, to get those goods to and through the county is really our purpose. We're a little bit focused on a little bit bigger picture. Obviously, we need the local traffic is key to our facilities, but we're looking more at mobility to and through the county. And so, this is, this is kind of the list of our projects. The main ones that we're working on is what we call the 365 tollway, which is the one that you see there in yellow, which is this segment right in here. And then the one that's a little more of interest to the Donna Independent School District is what we call the IBTC, which is short for the International Bridge Trade Corridor Project, which is this purple project right in here. Let me see if I can get the correct, this purple project right here. For reference, this is Interstate 2 right in here, and this is approximately between Valley View Road and Valverde is where that alignment is. So, on the 365 project, we're pretty far ahead on that project. We've received our environmental clearance already, so we've gone through the process that Maril described. We've already gone through that. We've determined our alignment. We've actually already purchased all of the right-of-way. So, we've bought, this is approximately a 13-mile segment of roadway. It starts at the Far National Bridge right here, where the little number 3 is, and it ends over here at the Anseldeus Bridge where the 4 is. And that's about a little less than 13 miles. This is an expressway-type facility. The right-of-way is pretty much substantially complete. We're down to the last couple of parcels. And so, we're finishing up the plans, and we're going to be bidding this project out probably in September of this year. So, in a few months, you'll see this project advertised, and we'll start looking for a contractor to commence construction. Under Chapter 370 of the Transportation Code, we're required to have a strategic plan, basically a five-year plan, and we're required to update it every even year. So, last year, we had to update our five-year plan for the next five years. The authority goes a little bit further. We do an eight-year plan. We go a little, a few more years than what's required. And so, really what you're seeing here is a summary of what changed between our 2014 plan and our 2016 plan. And one of the biggest, kind of the biggest changes from a dollar perspective is that, back in 2014, when we were looking at the 365 and the IBTC, we were looking at an asphalt roadway, a lot like what you see over here on the Expressway. Since then, we decided, the authority has decided to go to a concrete facility, entirely concrete on the main lanes, and that's because we're going to be able to facilitate overweight trucks. Right now, the legal limit for trucks in the state of Texas is 80,000 pounds of gross vehicle weight. Under two legislative sessions ago, the RMA was given authority to issue permits for overweight trucks up to 125,000 pounds gross vehicle weight, which coincides with the legal limit for trucks in Mexico. And so, in short, what that means is that the trucks coming across, if they meet all the safety requirements and all the, there's a litany of them, meet all those requirements, they can bring their loads across the border. Right now, what they have to do is, they have to basically break them down into legal loads, bring them in at 80,000 pounds or less. And so, they're allowed to bring them over, and overweight permit is just one of the requirements, of the many requirements. And that's basically a cost savings for those goods and services. And the end result is basically a savings to the consumer, because there's less cost to get that product to market. And so, that's one of the reasons we decided to go to overweight. And we started issuing permits for overweight in 2013, and I think the first year, we only issued like eight permits. Today, in 2017, we're issuing about 900 permits a week, overweight trucks. So, that's quite a bit of cargo that's coming across overweight on a weekly basis. And so, we're projected to hit about 35,000, 36,000 permits for this year, this calendar year. And so, that's one of the reasons that drove us to go to concrete, was because, basically, the lifecycle savings over a 40-year life, concrete versus asphalt, was on the order of magnitude of about $90 million over that 40 years. So, that's one of the major changes that you saw from 2014 to 2016. This project is probably a little bit more of interest to the Donna Independent School District, because it complements, it'll complement in some form or fashion, we don't know yet, but it'll complement State Highway 68, depending on where it lands. We're, in certain aspects, we're a little bit ahead of TechStop with our project, because the authority had to go in and do some protective buying, the right-of-way that you referred to south of the Expressway. And that was caused by the Electric Transmission Texas Project that came through a couple of years ago, those large transmission lines that came through the Donna area. And so, basically, the authority was looking at the alignment for the roadway. ETT came in and said, "We want to put our transmission line on that same alignment," which was basically not allow us to build a roadway in the future. And so, we basically got in a lawsuit with them. We got an agreed order, and we worked it out with them, the end result. But that resulted in the authority having to buy about $7 million of right-of-way, so that ETT would land in the right spot, and the authority would be able to facilitate a roadway in the future. And so, that's, so we actually bought Red River Subdivision, Country Meadows, and Quiet Village, and we relocated 107, 108, 104, 107 homes and the residence south of the Expressway. This project is still going through the, excuse me, through the environmental clearance process, and we're hoping to go to bid in 2019, but it looks like that schedule is starting to slide. One of the challenges we have is funding for the construction. This is about an $180 million construction project, I'm sorry, it's about a $108 million construction project, and so, we still have a challenge of financing this project. Again, the update for the IBTC since 2014, we looked at several scenarios, but the main one was going from asphalt to concrete. And I'm sorry, let me correct those numbers. The construction cost was actually 146 million. And I think, if you look at the very bottom one, the 108 is what I was referring to, that was to do a bare-bones frontage road scenario, when I referred to the 108 million dollars. One other project that we're kind of working on, and this is a collaboration between the Texas Department of Transportation, Hidalgo County Regional Mobility Authority, and our sister agency, Cameron County Regional Mobility Authority, is the 1925 project. Maril talked about, State Highway 68 was going to intersect 1925 at some location to be determined. And there's a gap between the Mercedes area and I-69 East. There's about approximately 10-mile gap. And so, we're working to get 1925 extended over to I-69 East. The Hidalgo County RMA is responsible for the portion. In Hidalgo County, and Cameron County RMA will be responsible for the portion in Cameron County. And those efforts are ongoing. I'm open to answer any questions you may have regarding our projects.
Once, once this, I'm looking at the project for Highway 68. Once you get started on that, how long will it take? Any idea?
I think Maril would answer that. Our project is about a 30-month, 30 to 36-month construction timetable, but I'm not sure what his timetable is.
Yeah, at this point, we don't have that information. We haven't put together a construction schedule yet. So, you know, it could take probably two years, two, three years to construct that project, just rough estimate.
Can you go back to one of your first slides that have all the routes on there?
Okay.
Mr. Rodriguez, please, from your... From your, yes.
Oh, okay.
From yours, Mr. Rodriguez. I'm just wondering about the, um, so the one that looks like it's going north and south.
South and down.
Yeah, oh, right there. The one that's going north and south to the east of sixty-eight, yeah, and then down further all the way.
That's, that's actually sixty-eight. The white one?
She's talking about south.
This purple one?
Yes.
Oh, no, but going up from there, what's that one?
That's actually sixty-eight. That's, that's approximately the two thousand and fourteen PSM.
I wanted to clarify, okay.
Yeah, and actually-
That's gonna be brand-new? That's gonna be brand-new?
Yes, that's, that's new facility. So kind of to give you a little historical information, this was actually an authority project. State Highway sixty-eight was, we actually had the project. And in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, we partnered with Texas dot, and Texas dot took the lead on it. But this used to be referred to as Segment D in our plan. And it's still shown on our plan, but it's formerly State Highway sixty-eight now.
Got it, okay.
So we're, we're, we're in partnership with Texas dot.
Okay.
So either way, gentlemen, both the county and Texas dot, we're looking at having these roads come through our district one way or another, from south to north, correct?
Yes.
Both of them, right.
Yeah, and I think I, to just add a comment to your question earlier about how roads impact the school districts. And there's kind of, there's two approaches. You know, you, the rooftops come first, and then you wait till the density is high enough that the road infrastructure has to be expanded to meet the da, demand of those rooftops. Or you build a roadway first to the ultimate, and design it to the ultimate capacity, and then the rooftop comes, the rooftops come. And I think this is kind of a combination of the two, because we're going through areas that are not, not highly populated. So we're planning for the future. And in the areas where the density is already high, well, we're trying to catch up. Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Martinado, Mr. Pilar, thank you for your time. Okay, Mr. President and trustees, moving right along, still with student superintendent's report. We've got item number three, academic report for Donna High School, followed by Donna North High School. And again, the message behind this, trustees, is that on a monthly, for every regular monthly meeting, we want to bring something with regard to academics, whether it be at a high school, middle school, or elementary. And as you all know, we just, thanks to y'all being there, we, we just completed graduations for both high schools on June first. And so what the, the report here is gonna be a recap, and basically specifically for academics in the areas that we have, both AP, dual enrollment, et cetera. So start off with our high school principal, Ms. Castillo.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Superintendent. I'm really excited to present Donna High School. I know that in the past years, I guess this group is very special to us, because this is a GRAB group. And this is a group that actually went to the two high schools. Prior to the high school, Donna North being in existence, we were a high school with senior class of at least eight hundred students. And so it's, it's really exciting to see a lot of students are benefiting from so many scholarships and things of that nature and certifications, because that's the idea of our district. I do want to present to you the enrollment that we had. Donna High School, we had three hundred and ninety students. And basically, at the high school level, what we do is we have the alpha divided amongst the counselors. And so they don't just have seventy-one students, they have almost four hundred kids. And so when you're looking at every counselor, you're looking at making sure that they are, making sure that the students have the twenty-six credits. Now, this is the last year of the students to be under the Distinguished Achievement Plan or the Recommended Plan in the minimum. They're moving on to a different plan, the Foundation High School Program with endorsements. And so we really need to be tracking these kids even closer. So here, you'll see the spread of the different counselors. Seventy-one with Ms. Garza, Ms. Reyna has seventy-six, Ms. Juarez has seventy-nine, Ms. Garza, Ms. Garza seventy-five, and Ms. Benia seventy-six. And so they're in charge of making sure that they contact the students on a daily basis if they're falling behind, utilizing the three-by-three and so on. So if you take a look at this, we'll see the graduation plan. We had out of three ninety, eighty students. There were actually under the Distinguished Achievement Plan, twenty-one percent. And the Recommended Plan, we had seventy-three percent of the students. A minimum, you'll find those students that go through a committee if they cannot make the recommended, or you're life skills students, which is a very high number that we have at Donna High School. The Texas Scholar, I know there was a question, I put this in at graduation. When we had our graduation, is, the question was, "What is a Texas Scholar?" A Texas Scholar is a DAP and a recommended student. And so those students, we graduated a total of three hundred and sixty-three, which is ninety percent of the students. The next slide is a number of course, courses, college courses taken, and these are the core. It does not take into account career and technology, that's a separate slide. So we're looking at courses from English thirteen oh one oh two, US History, Mexican-American Studies, Chemistry Calculus, Pre-Calculus, College Algebra, and things like that. So this senior group graduated with one thousand one hundred and forty-four. And so you notice the year before, this is a GRAB group. The GRAB facilitators, Ms. Hernandez and Ms. Ramirez, really pushed for these students to take concurrent classes even in the summer. So in the summer, the junior class was at seven hundred and forty-three, which is the current seniors, and the seniors picked up about four hundred and one college hours. And of course, we want to also look at the current juniors who are now seniors. And you'll notice the difference of four sixty-four without a, a GRAB-led group. And so the counselors really need to step it up here to make sure that the students are taking college courses. UT on ramps is something we offer here that the board approved. It's real exciting. I cannot tell you that we have like thirty students, because it can be a student that is a junior who's deciding to take Statistics, Physics, Computer Science, Pre-Calculus, and these students, when they take these courses, we are, we have the teacher of record who's the access facilitator, but we have the University of Texas teacher that works with the students. So parents wanna get a hold of grades, they need to contact the university. And so this is real exciting. Our freshman group, you'll see them in baby blue, and they're in Stats and Computer Science with their teachers on campus. And the teachers go to training. I know Ms. Vega's probably going to talk about this too. And if you notice, the orange bar is the tenth grade, and they're in Stats and Computer Science. And the eleventh grade in gray, you'll see them in English Three, Geoscience, in Physics. And you have them in also Computer Science and Pre-Calculus. And the senior group, you'll see them spread throughout the different courses that we offer.
This is the first year for this?
Yes, and we, as a matter of fact, we did preregistration online, and we already have a lot of kids requesting. We went online, we went, our counselors went down to the middle schools, and they had the students online registering. So through Teams, I'm able to look at course requests, and I can already sort of get an idea how many sections I will need with UT on ramps and bringing in more teachers on board. So that's something different for us, because we have not preregistered through Teams the way we have the system right now. We're really utilizing the technology. So we also have Dual Academies, has been in existence for many years, even before I was there. We are, we graduate in USO students in black gowns. The DEMSA Dual Enrollment for Medical Science Academy, which is biology, those students at the, during their sophomore year, mostly these are the kids that are ninth grade, they took Algebra I and move on to ninth, to tenth grade, and they accelerate in their courses. They're ready to be taking the TSI. So these students pass, and they get enrolled, they apply, and they get selected into Dual Academy. They can graduate with an associate. But one of the things they have to give up is a lot of extracurricular activity. Some do, some don't. But at the same time, these students start now. If they're sophomores going to the junior, they're enrolled right now. We have six kids enrolled already. So the graduating class right now had three. They accumulated a hundred and eighty-nine hours. So if you look at their junior year, they accumulated thirty-two hours, and then it just accumulated the next year. So we had three students in DEMSA, in DIA, Dual Enrollment for Engineering. We had one student with seventy hours, and DEJA, which is Criminal Justice Academy. And so that, we had one student that graduated with sixty hours. So overall, earned college credit, all three, all the students came up with two, three hundred and sixteen. Right now, the class of two thousand and eighteen, and we're talking about the kids that are enrolled right now, they're in their last year of the dual enrollment. So DEMSA, we have two students, and DIA, we have one. This coming school year, our sophomores that are juniors, we have three in Criminal Justice, one in Dual Enrollment, and three in DEMSA. So the numbers are increasing. So I'm looking forward to the early college high school, because they could actually draw in a multidisciplinary Dual Enrollment Associates for these kids. And we can really put them on the pathway to their higher ed, in their bachelor's, whatever they want to pursue. So Career and Technology, we have Texas State Technical College in Harlingen, TSTC. We have the Auto Collision, the first bar. We have six students that have accumulated ninety hours, so altogether combined. Then you look at Welding, STC, Culinary Arts, Business Information Management, and Business Management. So you have students that are also acquiring Dual Enrollment through STC or TSTC. STC awarded certificates, Career and Technology Education Dual Enrollment. We actually had the Culinary Arts Commercial Cooking. The students did graduate with their group at the STC with their black gown, two thousand and seventeen. We had eleven students. And then we had the Computer Application Specialist. The certificate was awarded for nine students. We have the Industry Recognized, and you'll see a legend on the side, Cosmetology. The AAFCS, the American Association of Family Consumer Science Pre-Professional Certificates. We have the Adobe, the Photoshop Certificate, Autodesk, American Welding Society Certificate, Certified Medical Assistance, Icar, which Introduction to Collision Repair Series Certificate. You have Certified Pharmacy Technician, Protection Officer Certificate, and then the Microsoft Office of Specialties. So what I did there, along with the counselor of CTE, we went ahead and we put the number of kids that are enrolled in those classes, and you'll see seventeen in Cosmo. These are your senior students. You have fifteen in Culinary Arts. The Education Certification, two, Adobe eleven, Autodesk ten, AWS seven, CMA eight, Icar seven, the Pharmacy Technician, twenty, Protection Officer, nine, and MOS sixty-six. And so our snapshot, snapshot for our junior class right now, we do have this also building in, in that area. We have ten students in Auto Collision through TSTC, accumulating seventy hours altogether. Four students in Welding, fifty-six hours. Culinary Arts, you have ten students, a hundred and ten hours. Business Information Management through STC, twenty-seven students, and two hundred and sixteen accumulated hours. Architectural Design through STC, four students, thirty-five hours. So a total there is four hundred and eighty-seven hours. CTE Certificate, Industry Recognized, and you'll see the number of certificates. The total students is in a room, then you have it broken down by eleventh, tenth, and ninth. And so we're looking at AWS, so it's the Welding Society. That's the underclassmen, mind you, it's not the seniors. It's, we're still moving on with the students' underclassmen. The Culinary Arts, we have ten. The Education Route, you have spread up to eleventh graders, nine, we have ten, nine students in tenth grade, and we have four that are in ninth grade. Then Autodesk, of course, we have one eleventh grader, two total students, of course. And then you have baby blue, we have one, that's ninth grade. And the Icar, we have ten that are eleventh grade currently right now, twenty in MOS, and four freshmen in MOS. AP courses, this, these are all the courses that are offered at Donna High School. Environmental Science, Psychology, Spanish Language, Physics, English Lit, US Government, US History, Composition Science Principles, Computer Science Principles, Biology, Calculus, English Language, World History, Statistics, Two-D Studio Art, and Three-D Studio Art. And that's your clay. So here, we have five, three hundred and twenty-eight students enrolled in AP classes. But all of them, together, you could have one student that took four exams, a total of five hundred and forty-nine. So we had a very large participation. Scores are not in yet. Once they get in, the students, if they score two or high, a three or higher, they will get a, a scholarship. Letters of Acceptance for Donna High School, four-year university, a hundred and twenty-seven students, thirty-one percent of three ninety. We had two hundred and thirty-six students for a two-year military, we had five. And one student changed their mind from the Marines to US Army. So you saw them with their stalls when they graduated. And we had twenty-three students that are applied to college, but are going to work. But they have applied. Sixteen students, four percent, twelve students going to adult daycare. These are your students that are Department of Assistant and Rehab Services, or home, mostly your life skills. So you can see the number of students that we have at, at Donna High School. As far as merit scholarship, we had five hundred and eighty-nine, or five hundred and ninety thousand dollars merit award scholarship, need-based, four-point-three million, and grand total, it was almost five million. So we're very proud of our students. This was a GRAB group, and it was expected, region was really pushing for these kids to apply. And that's our students for Donna High School, class of two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo.
Thank you.
Next, we'll call on the principal for Donna North, Ms. Linda Vega.
Okay, so good evening, DISD family. We're so excited to be here to present what our kiddos did this year for two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen. The first slide, we went ahead and broke down the number of students. We had four hundred students graduate at our campus. And so you will see, broken down by the number of students for each graduation plan. So under the distinguished, we had seventy-six students. Recommended, three hundred and twelve, minimum high school program, twelve. And those are the percentages. The next slide will show you the number of student, of seniors taking dual enrollment courses. So the first part of the presentation, we're going to specifically highlight just seniors, and then we'll go on to our underclassmen. So you can see there the number of students per area, and this is just core, and some of our electives, like Spanish and Communication Applications. You can see the number of students taking those courses. Now, these are different options that our district offers for our kiddos, how they can gain college credit. So like Mrs. Castillo mentioned, we have a variety of ways. So we have something to offer for many. So this is the first route, which is a traditional dual enrollment. Then we have our dual enrollment hours for our CTE seniors. Our CTE students actually have a, an array of certifications, industry licenses, and state, state licenses, and industry-recognized certificates to take. So how does this impact our district? So our district has to be prepared and facilitate for the learning for these kiddos. Not only do we have to have the staff be certified by the state of Texas as far as high school, but in order for our kiddos to capitalize on this, we have to have a very specialized staff to also qualify for our higher ed partners. So this isn't just, you know, there, there are very few people around this area, and that is why we've been able to sustain these programs. We also have to maintain a high level of industry standards. In order to qualify with our higher ed partners, they have to come in and qualify our, our resources, our facilities. And we have to prove that we are providing, if not equal, better, better circumstances as if they were sitting in their classrooms. So this has been a huge undertaking, and we're very excited about where we're at now. You can see our kiddos and how they're doing, the number of kids we have enrolled. The beautiful thing about our district is if we don't have the program here at our home campus, we are able to shuttle our students to our sister schools, and this goes for both. We shuttle them because we do have certain programs that only exist at one high school. But our kiddos get to capitalize on everything that DISD has to offer. And so that's the wonderful thing about our district. So we're very excited about that. So what kind of cost savings are we providing for our families? We are providing ballpark figure about eleven hundred dollars per course that the kiddos are taking. If any of you have any kids in college, you will see those, you know, tuition fees, books, and all of this is provided at no cost to our families. So the cost savings is phenomenal. These are some of our higher ed partners that we are collaborating with.
What is that RGV?
This right here, this right here is our, it is our higher ed partner who we're dealing with, or who we're, we're collaborating with for our medical assistant program. And so for us, it is less expensive to contract a turnkey program with them than what we would pay one staff person to teach these kids. So that has been a wonderful partnership that we've had with them.
And they're out of far?
I'm sorry?
Where they're, they're out of far?
Yes. So that, another option for kiddos to obtain dual enroll, or to college credit is through the AP exam option. And so what our kiddos do is, these are the different areas that we offer AP courses. So what they need to do in order to obtain that college credit is that they have to score a three, four, or a five in order to, to get that college credit. So if they don't go the traditional route, they also have the AP exam route that they can take. can take. And those are some of the areas. Now for next year, some of the new AP courses that we're going to be offering will be Human Geography. We're also going to offer Art History AP. With our UT On-Ramps partners, we're going to now branch off into Physics Two. Our kiddos did so well that now we're going to offer more. US History, and we recently were notified that we're going to do a course called Engineer Your World, and we're going to use their curriculum at both high schools for that course. Monday.
You had a hundred and sixteen that took the test. How many of those do you anticipate will, will get the vocatic?
We, we won't know the scores until the summer. I want to be very positive and say a hundred and sixteen, sir, but we'll have to wait for the results. So, at Donna North High School, we're very proud to say that we had nine students this year that obtained their associate's degree. And there are, they, there are the breakdowns per area. Now we're going to go to our industry recognized certificates and state licenses. So as of this point, we still have kids that are testing. Depending on what licensing exam they're taking, there may be criteria. For example, they had to have had a, a high school diploma in order to, to test. So we still have kids that are challenging. But at this point of the one hundred and eighty-three students, we, we've got a hundred and ninety-one challenging, or a hundred and forty-six have outright already qualified. So we have a hundred and eighty-three possible. Right now, we've got a hundred and forty-six sealed. So we're excited about that. What are some of the courses that are offered and the industry recognized licenses and/or certificates? There is the breakdown, and like I said, we have a, an array of courses in the different program areas, and so we are proud of where we are and how diverse we are. And I also included for you an article that was released about a year ago, and we actually made national headlines as far as our Career and Technical Education Program. CNN Money actually chose four programs from across the country, and we're very proud to say that DISD was one of the four. And so we are impacting our community and, of course, our students. And so the takeaway for our students is that they're leaving, yes, with a high school diploma, but the wonderful thing is that they're leaving our high school the very next day with earning potentials of, you know, twelve to fourteen dollars an hour. And that's a beautiful thing, when they have to put gas in their tank and they have to buy books, because their time is worth more. So that was one of the reasons why we were chosen, just how successful we've been with our CTE program. And so that article is there for you. Here are some of the instructors and what they teach and the industry recognized certificate or license that we offer. And of course, you will see that at, from some of these, we do share the, the staff. So of our four hundred high school students, we had ninety-five point forty percent that applied to either a two or four-year institution. And of those ninety-five point forty, we had a hundred percent of those kids who were accepted to, to one of the places that they applied. And those are some of the institutions that our kids will be going to this next year. So the number, the total number of seniors that received a scholarship at our campus was seventy-three, for a total of one point one, one million, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars. And for us, it's been a great thing to see that the distribution is, is getting better, and we're seeing a lot of that money trickle down past, you know, the, the top graduates. So that's a really good plus for us. Total campus-wide, we're a relatively new school, as you know, and we are hitting the four million dollar mark. Here are our top twenty kids. They have generated three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And thirteen of our top twenty, in addition to all of the other accolades, they also received an industry recognized certificate or license. So we're super excited, and we had all of these students, we're pending our Jose Francisco Martinez, but these are our kids that this year have signed letter of intents to continue with their, their sport events, and so we are so excited about that. Here are their pictures, and this is where they're going. So that is definitely a plus for us. We also had a couple of students with perfect attendance. We did have seventeen school-wide, and two were seniors. So for our underclassmen, we currently have three hundred and seventy students that are underclassmen, that are taking dual enrollment courses, either through Core or Career and Technical Education. And we are very happy to say that we have fourteen students that are right now in one of the Associate Academy programs. So that's a beautiful thing, and we're very excited about the increased number of students that have been accepted at Donna North High School. Underclassmen that have taken AP exams, here's the breakdown of what those are, and we have six hundred and six students. Our underclassmen, we had a hundred and eighteen challenging, as of right now, a hundred and seventeen qualified for industry recognized licenses or certifications. And the beautiful thing about this is that you don't have to be any particular grade level. The way these work is that by industry standard, as long as you have the skill set to challenge and be successful, then the grade level is irrelevant. Because we do have very talented students, they actually qualify for multi-level, and so, you know, they leave with highly qualified, and we have, we have people from the private sector that will come and recruit our kids right out of our classrooms at, you know, upward of thirty dollars an hour for our welding program, as an example. We have thirteen students that have signed on with the Armed Services, and I did, in your slide, I did provide the names of those thirteen students and which, which branch they have signed on for. Do we have any questions for me?
Thank you, Ms. Vega.
Thank you.
President and trustees, any questions, comments?
Thank you, Ms. Vega, for the questions.
Oh, you're welcome.
Mr. President and trustees, moving along to consent agenda. Item one, we have accounts payable. I know that there was some questions earlier, and I know that Ms. Martinez, I saw the email where she responded. So does anyone have any questions on any one of those?
No. Questions on consent agenda, please?
Accounts payable. The next one would be item two, discussion, possible action on budget amendments for general operating and special revenue for the month of May twenty-seventeen. That one was also discussed through board review. If there's any questions, I'll just sit and address it.
Okay, any questions on number two?
If not, administration recommends approval. This is an action item.
Yeah, number two, again, it's not coming from the fund balance?
No.
Making sure. Okay, I got a recommendation to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Robina? Second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Favor.
Anybody opposed?
I oppose.
Mr. John Billman opposes. Motion carries.
Mr. President, item number three is a investment report. You have it before you, and that is not an action item, it's just a report. Also, item number four, financial statements, the district's financial and child nutrition program for May twenty-seventeen. That is also a report. Item number five, we have the report on monthly tax collections for the month of April twenty-seventeen. Again, that's a report. And item number six is the approval of minutes for regular board meeting, May ninth twenty-seventeen, and special board meeting, May sixteen twenty-seventeen. That is an action item, so unless someone has any questions for the approval of minutes.
Make the motion, we approve?
Administration recommends approval.
There's a motion by Mr. Robina to approve?
Second.
Second by Dr. Mary, all in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Favor.
Anybody approve? Motion carries.
Going on to DO, our District Operations. DO one, Architects' monthly report, ROCA, status report on all of Donna ISD's current facility projects. I know that we don't have any to report, so that's why, unless someone has a question on that, then we can go to item number two.
I have a question on the architect.
Okay.
Maybe for you.
Yes, sir.
Having to do with the project at Solis.
Okay.
Are we locked into that, or are we going to look at the other option?
Actually, on that one, sir, that same day that we discussed, I called and we made the contact, they had just had a, a, what do we call it, a construction meeting that same morning, so they, they had already locked in on that.
Okay.
We are going to have a meeting with that other, still that other option for future. We've got the contact information, and I gave that to Ms. Arribas.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, trustees, item number two, DO two, discussion of possible action on approval of memorandum of understanding between the Region One Education Service Center and Donna ISD regarding audit, adult education and literacy program for twenty-seventeen, eighteen. This is something that we, we're completing our fifth year, we're about to embark on our year number six, under the direction of Mr. Tomas Temez. He's been very good for us as a district. If there are no questions, administration recommends approval.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this, what is this costing the district?
This is not costing anything to the district, because we're members of a consortium, consortium with Region One.
Oh, okay.
We, all we do is provide the facility. They, they provide the staffing, they, they bring the materials and supplies.
Okay.
How many, how many graduates are you going through this, are you going through your program?
Actually, this year, we had thirty-five ESL students here at the central office. And we had another twenty-three over at the 3D Academy meeting. And then GD students, we had another twenty at the 3D Academy. We had a total of seventy-eight, so, students, adult, learning. As far as graduates, I don't have that data, that, that, that's.
That's just through this program, right?
That's just through this.
That does not cover the 3D?
No, sir, this is strict, separate in part.
That's good. So our, so our parents are bene, our parents are benefiting for the program.
There is a motion to, do we hear a motion?
Yes.
Motion we made, I second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Watts, second by Mr. Guerrero, all in favor?
Favor. In favor.
Motion carries. Academic Services.
Mr. President, trustees, going on to Academic Services. AS one, discussion, possible action to approve the adoption of textbooks and online licenses for advanced placement, AP Calculus, AP Computer Science, AP Statistics, Digital Electronic, Engineering Math, Financial Math, and Statistics for the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school year for both high schools. And this is just asking for approval, so that we can begin the process on the adoption of these books for the, for next year. As you well know, we've got to teach them, and so we want to be, be certain that we are prepared with, with the books that we're going to use. So again, we're not purchasing anything yet, we just want the approval for the adoption of these textbooks.
I was asking, it's only sixty copies, is that going to be enough?
Uh, we're, we're having that right now, because obviously, when we're looking at, we're looking at class sets when we have them inside the class. So if there are no questions, administration recommends approval.
I move we approve?
There's a motion by Ms. Vena, second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
Anybody approve? Motion carries.
Moving on to AS two, Mr. President and trustees, discussion, possible action to approve the optional flexible school day program for 3D Academy for the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school year. Historically, trustees, this has been something that we had, we would do one time, and it was a, taking care of the beginning of this year. TA has asked that from here on out, we're going to be doing it on a yearly basis. And what this means is because 3D is one of our alternative schools in terms of the, versus the regular school, so we are also requesting to be on the flexible, which means that the students are going to have a flex schedule, which means that when it comes to FTEs, they're going to keep record per student individually, and this is something that we have to have board approved because of the flexibility to being an alternative campus. So if there are no questions, administration recommends approval on this.
I've got, I've got a question.
Okay.
And I, I don't know whether it falls in line with this, this or not, but I, I understand the, the 3D goes four days a week.
In your, Mr. Guerrero, in your attachments, if you go towards the end, second to the last page, you see a calendar.
In the fall semester, 3D goes Monday to Friday. In the spring, because they have to adjust, they go Monday to Thursday. The black is when they're off. And you see, starting in January, they, they, that's first time, the first month that they start to be off. Rationale for that is because the staff comes back in, and if you notice that next year, on twenty-eighteen, June twenty-eighteen, the summer testing begins on June twenty-fifth. The faculty from 3D comes in still on their contractual days. That's how they make those adjustments. The only time that you see a Monday to Friday in the spring, give me an example, go up to April, April the second through April the sixth, those stars mean that we're testing, so in that, on that week, everyone comes, including the student staff.
The, the, the reason I was asking that is, uh...
Mr.?
Mr. Lugo.
Nelly Gonzalez Lugo, he is present.
I had a question. I, I heard, heard something that was of concern. That you're on the schedule, it's a four, four-day week, but then you've got several employees who have chosen to go five days a week and are cutting it off then?
No, what happens is the, the teachers and the students, anywhere that there's a block, that means teachers and students do not report to school.
Okay.
And the reason why they don't go to school is because in order for the teachers to work that month of June, and as part of their contract, we have to reduce the Fridays, right? So they're working the one eighty-seven days that their contract calls for.
My question is this, is are there some teachers who don't abide by the schedule and go the five days?
No. No, sir, all teachers, if there isn't, if there's a block, the staff that is on two-twenty-six, like me, for example, I'm there Monday through Friday. Our dean is Monday through Friday. Depending on the number of days, then that'll determine whether they're there the full week or whether they're there just for four days. Like counselors, for example, they're on two-oh-seven. Right, so then they had, I want to say Fridays off on, in May, so that they could be there all of the month of June, or else we would be without them, or I would have to pay them extra duty pay, and we don't have the money for that.
There are some, some teachers who will go in on a Friday.
No teachers, sir. No teachers. It's just counselors, principal, myself, secretary. But the teachers, Monday to Thursday, second semester, January through June.
Thank you.
I make the motion that we approve?
I say motion to approve, second by, motion by Ms. Robina, second by Mr. Guerrero, all in favor?
Favor. In favor.
Oppose? Motion carries. AS three.
Mr. President and trustees, AS three, discussion, possible action to approve out-of-state student staff travel for Donna North High School Skills USA National Leadership, Leadership Skills Conference in Louisville, Kentucky, on Sunday, June the eighteenth, twenty-seventeen, through Sunday, June twenty-fifth. If you recall, these are our kiddos that competed and advanced to the national level, and obviously, when, when it's out-of-state travel, we have to bring this to, to US trustees. We, we are very proud of them, and at this time, if there are no questions, administration recommends approval.
So moved.
Are they flying?
No, they're driving, because there's a...
They're driving, because they just have to take some items with them.
And I believe there's one that's got some flight situation, so they're driving, that's why.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Robina, second by Dr. Mary, to approve?
Approve.
All in favor?
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Good luck.
Business and Finance.
Mr. President, trustees, we're moving on to Business and Finance, BF one, discussion of possible action to award vendors request for proposal, RFP number zero one zero four one seven dash three five oh, occupational therapy services for school year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Trustees, this is regarding our special needs kiddos that, based on the ARD they require set therapy. And what we're doing is we're recommending two primary Donna Therapy Group and alternative P and G Therapy Services. This is only so they could be on the list, doesn't necessarily mean they're going to get paid unless they have students that are going to that area. So it's all contingent on the need, but these are the ones that are being recommended.
Who's, who's been recommended?
Primary Donna Therapy Group and Alternative P and G Therapy Services. And this is for the, the occupational. And you see behind that, you have the backup as well, who's on there and. So the special lead, based on the students' needs, will refer them to either one of them. Okay? Any questions on that?
Who, are these the ones they've been using in the past?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I know Dr. Vina was here in the house, that's who we have been using.
Okay, any concerns or issues?
I visited with her on that, and no, we don't have any concerns. Mr. Doc, come on here. Question was, we're using these in the past, and have we had any concerns?
Good evening, yes, we have used them in the past, and the great thing about the contract services that we've used in the past, they're very professional, they're very student-centered, they work very well with, with our staff and teachers, so we've been very happy with the services they've been providing.
Are they providing the services at, at the school, or does it?
Yes. No, it is at, at the campus, where the students are, are assigned.
They come to us.
Yes, they come to us.
Any other questions?
Questions?
No.
Administration recommends approval.
There's a motion by Ms. Watts to approve.
Second.
Second by Ms. Vina, all in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, trustees, DF two, discussion of possible action to award vendors request for proposals, RFP number zero one zero four one seven dash three four nine, physical therapy services for the school year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Again, now we're talking about the PT, same population of our students. And again, the recommendation is to go to with primary WE Therapy Services, LLC, and alternate Rio Grande Valley Rehab Plus Outpatient Therapy Services, LP. And Dr. Vina was here, in case we have any questions regarding the PT.
Who's that WE company has been on?
Yes, WE Therapy comes from Westaco, we've been working with them for the last three years.
Who are they, of their name?
Belinda Rodriguez is the, the primary person that I work with.
What's her name again?
Belinda Rodriguez. And they're very professional, they're really great to work with.
And we had them last year, or?
Yes, we did, we've had them for the last three years.
Any other questions?
Administration recommends approval.
There's a recommendation to approve.
So move.
Got a motion by Mr. Guerrero, the second by Ms. Watts, to approve. All in favor?
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
And BF three, Mr. President, trustees, discussion of possible action to award vendors request for proposals, RFP number zero one zero four one seven dash three four eight, speech therapy services for the school year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. And again, this also entails our, our special needs students. We do have on here the two vendors being recommended, Primary Donna Therapy Group and Alternative WE Therapy Services, LLC. Again, Dr. Vina, is there any questions, she's here to answer. If there are no questions, administration recommends approval.
Okay, there's a recommendation to approve. There's a motion by Ms. Watts.
Second.
Second by Mr. Guerrero, all in favor?
Favor. In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Dr. Vina. Moving on to BF four, Mr. President, trustees, discussion of possible action to reject and rebid request for proposals, RFP number zero one zero four one seven dash three four five A, special events for the school year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Again, rationale behind this, we wanted to bring more on the list. So unless there's any questions, administration recommends approval.
Okay, there's a recommendation to reject and rebid.
I move, yeah.
Got a motion by Mr. Guerrero, second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
On this, first, Ms. Nordea, so she round?
She wasn't able to make it tonight.
Okay. This, this is one of the ones that, I think, Mr. Castillo, that we asked for them to, to go out and try to solicit more vendors. McCannan has forty vendors on their approved list, you know, I think we can do better than, than one or two.
Yes, sir, we're, we're working on that, she's provided a list for me.
And, and just to kind of add to that, Mr. Guerrero, obviously, what, one thing that we want to be certain is that anyone that we dealt with, we give them a friendly reminder, so we don't leave anybody out. Okay, we don't want to just.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm calling about, you know, for them to give a call.
Right.
Tell them we're going out, you know, we're, we're wanting to solicit.
Yes.
If there are no questions, administration recommends approval.
Oh, we already.
Oh, I'm sorry, we. You were commenting after the.
Mr. Guerrero messed this up there.
All right, Mr. Guerrero, we're good, we're good, okay. BF, BF five, discussion of possible action to reject and rebid request for proposals, RFP number zero one zero four one seven dash three four five B, catering for the school year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. And again, this is very similar to the one we just discussed previously, we want to bring out more. Administration recommends approval.
I'm motion that we reject and rebid.
I'll second it.
There's a motion by John Billman to reject and rebid, seconded by Val Guerrero.
Favor.
All in favor?
In favor.
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, trustees, BF six, discussion of possible action to approve the purchase of technology equipment, computers, and Surface Pro tablets for Rivas Elementary through the TIPS Cycle Five Grant, Early Intervention Model. And it is noted previously that this is already part of the grant that they have received, and it's three-year, and all this is, money's coming specifically from the grant, so that they can arrive and be, be here ready for the first day of school.
These will be used by the, by the students?
Both students and staff. And, and again, this is all allowable through the grant. So no questions, administration recommends approval.
So move.
We approve the.
John already.
Mr. Avila makes a motion. Mr. Guerrero makes a second, all in favor?
Favor. In favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
BF seven, Mr. President, trustees, we have discussion of possible action to approve the renewal for atomic learning used as a professional development resource district-wide. This is something that we, we have been using, and we're just bringing for renewal. Our, our teachers utilize this, and it's also part of our technology plan that we have that. The usage has been good, and of course, part of this is to, to bring on the, the goals that we have for technology. And we did run a report today, and the usage has been good. On that, over a thousand have been using that, beginning from August the first.
Over a thousand teachers have logged in?
Yes.
Question?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
It says here, access for all teachers, staff, students, and parents, flexible learning with unlimited access. How well is it being utilized so that we, as a board, should expect to, if it is utilized at its maximum, hopefully, that we see the students and teachers and the whole district improving on grades? Is that something that has been looked at?
Not necessarily the correlation with grades.
It doesn't, okay.
Right, this is more for the, the actual goal that we had, the online technology, professional development for all teachers. And this year, we concentrated on the four required topic modules, which is classroom management, BYOD, Go Anywhere with Virtual Reality, classroom management strategies, and SMART that, that we have.
What is, what is classroom management involved, like discipline, or?
Yes, for the teachers to go in, and actually, it's a PD that they do online. And it's kind of, you know, it's not required for all of them to do, but it's part of the, them to have access.
But it's a tool that can help those that are struggling with discipline issues.
Good evening, board members, Mr. Castillo, or President, on that one, it's more also for the apps that we're bringing the, bring your own devices, so we're trying to get that momentum going. So that's why we're offering those requirements for the teachers.
Okay.
Do, do the principals utilize this, this program? They have a, a teacher who is having classroom management problems or issues. Teachers, I, I know that if you have a teacher that are, you know, I don't know whether, I don't want to say you have them on a growth plan, or, or some type of intervention program to, to try to help your teachers improve their discipline in the classroom. Are they, like, you know what, I want to ask for you to do, how, any number of units from that program?
Not necessarily.
Do any principals? You got a bunch of principals out there, do all you utilize that?
Not necessarily, we, we have that, this in our technology plan, which it goes for next year. And what they do is it's more for the PD, so they can demonstrate the technology skills and proficiency. So it's available to all, all educators.
Yeah, but I know, I mean, you know, I know that we have, we have teachers out there, I mean, you know, that, that have issues with classroom management, or classroom, you know, controlling their kids and stuff like that, and I, I see this, and we have it.
Well, that's why I was asking the question.
And those, trustees, I may interject, those, we actually send them directly to Region One to enhance some sessions, and Region One does have those when it comes to assisting with classroom management.
We also have the ability to create our own curriculum and help out those teachers, and then we can upload it to this atomic learning, as possible, too, we can coordinate that, too.
I mean, that's what, I, I think that's what Dr. Mary was trying to get at, is that, that we have the tools, you know, how, how, how well are these tools being utilized by our teachers, you know, I mean, I mean, we're, we're giving, I mean, we want to give them every and all available tools for them to be successful with their kids. But it's like, if we put it out there and it's not being used.
Then why are we having?
Well, the four requirements, they show that.
Does anybody out there use this? Can we have a show of hands of those of you that, that actively use this, this program?
Well, these are, these are principals, yeah, it's for teachers, sir.
I know four users on the Bring Your Device in Classroom.
Out of the four requirement, like Bring Your Own, one-to-one, Bring Your Own Device Classroom, eighty-four percent out of a thousand eighty-two, we had nine hundred and four teachers did that, completed that, Go Anywhere with Virtual Reality, that's one of the things we're trying to get momentum as well. Eight hundred and forty-three teachers out of a thousand eighty-two that we have, seventy-eight percent. On the Classroom Management Strategy, seven hundred and fifteen teachers out of a thousand eighty-two, that's a sixty-six percent. And then SMART, Smarter Gaming, six hundred and forty-six teachers out of a thousand eighty-two, which is give us a sixty percent. That, those are the required assignments that we assign to the teachers, and we're about, we're, we're doing good, we're getting, we're getting up there.
I think that's, that's the, the statistics I think you were asking.
Because we're spending twenty-eight thousand.
And there's some, there's a bunch of them there, and it might be low, because each teacher can take into consideration, you know, I'm going to take this other course. And that's why you see a low, a low number, if you see that, in, in the, in your.
Other teachers, I mean, principals and administration, I mean, we got our, our, our strategist out there, I mean, that might be something that they might want to utilize to, to have them improve, you know, because, I mean, we always want to improve, you know, teacher performance, student performance, you know, if you improve teacher performance, you know, correlation should be improved student performance. There should be a positive correlation between usage and student performance.
I move we approve.
I second that.
There's a motion by Ms. Vina, and a second by Mr. Guerrero, all in favor?
Favor. I think it was a second by Ms. Robina.
I think Mr. Guerrero got in, I had everyone.
Oh, okay.
He's right in here. So is there anybody opposed? So all in favor?
All in favor.
All right, motion carries.
Mr. President, trustees, we're moving on to Human Resources, HR one, discussion of possible action to approve employee paid dental insurance for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen year. And, Mr. President, trustees, if I can call him Mr. Jett, our consultant.
Evening.
Mr. Jett, good evening. And Mr. Pete Harami is here as well, agent.
In reference to HR one, the recommendation is to renew Ameritas Dental. The only reservation that I had was the projected renewal rate was supposed to be three percent. When I calculated each line item, it came out to six point nine percent. While meeting with the insurance committee, it seemed as though each employee was pretty satisfied with Ameritas. Just personally myself, I didn't think that the, the increased rate should have been more than double. Can I get you to clearly talk into the mic, I'm having a hard time hearing you unless, unless the volume is down.
Sir, are you saying it's going up more than two dollars and?
It's, so in other words, as a percentage of increase renewal rate, usually, they pay about three to four percent, right?
Uh-huh.
So when you calculate each, each benefit, it came out to six point nine percent. That's my only reservation, I just wanted that to be identified.
If it's employee only, it's, it's like two bucks, like two dollars and twenty cents.
Right.
As the dollar amount, it's not a lot, as a percentage-wise, it, it's more than the usual.
I move we approve.
There's a motion by Ms. Vina to approve, second by Mr. Guerrero, all in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to HR two, Mr. President, trustees, discussion of possible action to approve employee paid vision insurance for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year. And once again, I'll call him Mr. Jett, our consultant.
So in regard to HR two, the insurance carrier is Superior Vision, they have a locked-in rate up to age, I'm sorry, year twenty twenty. My recommendation is to renew as well, the insurance committee also felt the same.
I move we approve.
I second.
There's a motion by Ms. Vina, and a second by Mr. Guerrero, all in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
HR three, Mr. President, trustees, discussion of possible action to approve employee paid accident, critical illness, cancer, and hospital indemnifying insurance for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year. And once again, I'll call him Mr. Jett, our agent.
So in regard to HR three, after a comparative and competitive analysis, I found that the, the most suitable insurance carrier for voluntary benefits that would meet the, the district's best needs and confidence would be through the insurance carrier of Colonial Life, to be provided by the office of Tom and Mike Snyder, and using the single-source billing system called Seleryx, that's S E L E R I X, so that they can provide the billing reporting and enrolling on all lines. Your recommendation again is? Is Colonial Life.
Uh, that one didn't get any votes from the committee, though. It looks like the committee was split between fifteen and fourteen for Allstate, what do we have now, from this past year?
You have Allstate.
Um, can you just provide some background on why you're recommending Colonial Life versus, what did the committee recommend?
So the current carrier is Allstate, right? If you look at the benefits and the pricing, you'll look at a lower benefit for a higher cost, which is completely off left field. All right, even though in the, in the committee meeting for insurance, somehow, votes went all in favor for that, which mathematically doesn't make a whole lot of sense, I don't know who wants the lower benefit for a higher price. Next, Affleck was one of the carriers. So the, the single-source billing system that they wanted to use was called Bentech. I looked up Bentech, Affleck wasn't even an approved carrier of that single-source billing system, that made no sense to me whatsoever. So when you look at the, the comparative analysis on their rates versus what they provide, what stood out the most was that Colonial Life will allow an individual to pick critical ill, uh, critical illness by itself, a cancer policy by itself, or a combination of the two, and stacking them. a cancer policy by itself, or a combination of the two and stacking them. The other carriers didn't provide that at all.
So you, you can individualize?
You can individualize or, or group them.
Or group them.
And their rates were, were much, much lower than Allstate by far.
And as far as paying the individual, it's, it's a smoother?
Correct. So I, I want to say about three or four years ago, there was another, another agent that provided Colonial. It was a great company, just wrong application. What ended up happening was the reimbursements are always very slow, they were sluggish. So I, I made sure to communicate with the, what's called the MGA, the, the top guy in San Antonio, to have a solution. What did you do different? What they told me was that they automi, they automated it to where it's electronic, it's ETF. So reimbursements are faster. Being that they actually bought the licensing for the single source billing system, Seleryx, they actually have the ability to change or make modifications in-house as to oppose to Affleck. They have to out, outsource and farm out to a, a firm in Florida, which if there is any, any problems with Affleck or reimbursement or, or any type of plan design, what would end up happening is you'd be in queue to another, another state and it would just, it would compound, it would compound the problem and delay it, correct?
Yeah, when you have critical illnesses, you need to be reimbursed.
Fast, correct, especially hospital indemnity.
And, and this, the Seleryx system?
Yes, sir.
Is that something that's going to be user friendly for our, our staff?
Correct.
To assist, to assist the employees? If you have an employee comes into, to the risk management office and one of the employees there can sit down and utilize the system and help?
So when I took the demo, it was, it was very user friendly, actually has two hundred different reports. Colonial, should they be awarded, are happy to provide it at no cost to the district and no cost to the agent of record. And that will also provide communication enrollment for the medical side. So there's a, there's more efficiency and cost savings in doing that.
How much of a savings would that be?
I don't, I didn't peg a number, it'd be a lot. The far opposite would be a lot of waste, a lot of delay, and a lot more problems would, would be costly.
No, but we're looking at what's best for the district too. And the coverage.
If I'm not mistaken, Ms. Delarious, I think that when I looked at all that stuff, somewhere in the, in the billings, they, they, they charge you for it, I think.
Some single source systems charge a dollar, a dollar fifty ahead.
Yeah, we, we understand that it's employee, we're employee, it's employee pa, uh, pay. One of my concerns that I have, that I was looking at the insurance committee meeting that you all had, and you had people in here who aren't on the insurance committee who voted. And, I mean.
Hello.
You know, I, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, that, I mean, there was a big push for Allstate, right? But Allstate, like Mr., as Mr. Jett just said, is the highest. You know, why would you want to pay the, I mean, impose the highest premiums on your employees when we have an option to save them money and provide them the same or better services?
That's been, that's been waived.
That's been waived.
Your recommendation, sir?
Colonial Life, it's been waived.
It's still, it's still colonial?
Correct.
Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Guerrero, what are you, what are you talking about? Folks voted that weren't on the list because I see the num, the same number of people on the list.
No, no. There, there, the way I understand the way that the committee should have been structured is every, every department, every campus is entitled to one, one vote. And there was several departments in there that had more than one vote. So I mean, if you really look at it, the, the people who voted more than one time, for, I mean, for example, if you had, one department had four people, or three, three or four people.
So are you saying some folks didn't sign in that were sent in?
They all signed in.
What I'm saying is.
No, that you had over representation from one place versus minimal representation from another. So how objective, what we're looking at is how objective is this recommendation by the committee? Is it unbiased? Is it what's going to be the best for our whole district? Because you have a, a group that is deciding for all the employees that choose to utilize that, that insurance. It's voluntary, but is that what they would have wanted? In other words, you have to remain objective.
I had, I had one comment.
But isn't that the purpose of the committee to recommend what everyone?
Well, I had, I had, let, let me just make a, make a statement here. Is I had one, one individual that said, hey, committee, I want to, I want to take this back to my campus and I want to discuss it. And I, let's meet again, and they said, no, we're going to vote on it tonight. And, you know, it really wasn't, I mean, I, it would have been great had they gone back to the, to their campuses and said, you know, hey, let me talk to the, to my employees and give them the option and say, hey, you know, what do you guys want? I mean, do you want some, do you want to pay more for less coverage? Or do you want to pay less for more coverage?
So the committee was given that option to either.
Not to take it back to their campus?
Yes. The options were, do you want to reconvene, go back and talk to your staff when you convene, so we can vote? Do you feel like you're ready to vote now, is it at that time? Or do you want to go back to your campus, talk to your staff, and then submit your vote via email? They said we're ready to vote.
Well, several of the people that I talked to felt that they were, they were not given that option.
You know, in looking at that, at that list, there were names that were typed in there and there was people that signed that didn't match the name.
Right, because at the last meeting, the campus said somebody else.
And they were, but they were not members of the committee. And then you had two people from Risk Management that showed up as well.
Not that showed up, we're never could have been.
And they were members of the committee as well.
They've always been on the committee. We can go back to our previous minutes and our previous notes, they're all members of the committee.
Okay, back to the, the recommendation. The recommendation is Colonial?
Well, I feel like there's more that needs to be sorted out. There's some, there's something in the communication that's not happening because ideally, a committee is formed to make a recommendation to the board on, on what, so that, we have to figure out why that, whatever, I don't know what's going on, but we have to make sure that the function of this committee, that this committee is set up to do the work that they've been charged to do is to provide the recommendation. Now, I don't know how that gets sorted out. I mean, I would want our, you know, our consultant to be on the same page as our committee. It doesn't sound like that's the case right now. I think that has to be worked out. So I don't feel prepared to make a vote on this because I don't feel like we have the clarity and the communication that we need to be informed to make a decision that's going to impact two thousand plus.
I can help you with that argument. Would you feel that a lower benefit for a higher price is good?
The other thing is.
The, the folks in the committee, I would imagine they would looked at that and, and said, this looks like a higher. I, I don't imagine people are voting against their personal interests.
Another, another, another fact is, another fact that in South Texas, which schools have Allstate? It's only with one and the same agent.
Now, let's.
Colonial Life, excuse me, I'm sorry. Colonial Life serves forty-two state governments, over five thousand local governments, and over three thousand educational entities. Allstate doesn't, they're not even a blip on the map.
I have, I have a question because I had discussed this with Mr. Costile at a meeting we had a couple of weeks ago. And it is a voluntary plan, right? And I asked him, do they have to go with whatever the board recommends? And he said, no, is that correct or am I wrong?
It's through the committee.
No, no, when he and I discussed about the, it's a voluntary plan, right?
Correct.
And I asked you, do they have to go with whoever, can they go with different plans? Like one of the three, or does it have to be only one that we decide on?
Like on this one right now?
Yes.
It's what the board approves, makes the recommendation, yes.
Are we ready to make a? No?
Right.
That's what I'm asking.
I'm sorry. Quinn, just to take you back a little bit, when we did have Colonial in the past, I know that the district went to transitions and many of us, including myself, were still receiving the, the statements for Colonial. So it was our choice to continue with it if we wanted to or not, and pick up basically two if you wanted to have two. So it's what the district goes to.
I still have my Colonial.
Right.
You know, and I'm paying it outside, you know, I, I write them a check every three months and it's covered. I've never had any, you know, they, 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 like, you know, and I'm, I'm basically myself, you know, we did hire Mr. Jett as a consultant. You know, Mr. Jett has been very thorough as far as going through there and doing all his research and comparing apples with apples. And his analysis indicates that our employees would get the most benefit at the lowest possible price through Colonial, you know?
Correct.
And.
Mrs. Delarious, I mean, you're waving your head no, and I'm trying to understand, you're waving your, the.
We, when we had Colonial a couple of years ago and it's like.
But, but you understood what he said, that, that it was the mediator that, that stumbled there for the employees.
So when Colonial presented to the committee two or three weeks ago, those, all of that was discussed and the committee still was not comfortable with both of them. They didn't even want to entertain.
The list that I see here and from what I've been, been told, this is not a true representation of all the campuses district wide. That is correct?
Yes, but no, they are. We called Stephanie, we sent EoD out, we called for somebody, we have to send somebody. This is the person you, you indicated this September that was going to be your representative. We also go as far as saying we don't want different people at the meeting, it has to be the same person because sometimes we'll do, you know, we keep one thing pending and so the next meeting, we continue. So it can't just be, just send somebody for the sake of having somebody there. This is a truth remaining of the different campuses and the different partners.
That's not what I'm hearing from many. And, and I'm just trying to.
And see, we hear from people in the district and that, that are expressing this to us as school board trustees that may not agree or they're not, they're afraid to speak up. And that's what creates is, and we, and I've told, mentioned it to Mr. Costile, we need to have transparency among all the directors and communication. And I still am not seeing that.
So are y'all saying that even though we have someone for, like, all the schools are listed here and there's a representative from each school? Are you all, I, I think I need clarity and understanding what people are saying.
From every campus here. I could be wrong, but that's, that's.
Well, all the schools are there.
Yeah, for the sake of the campuses, I can assure you, there's twenty-two under. That's what I counted right now, twenty-two, just for the sake of the, to answer that question.
So I guess I need to understand more, like, when, what you, if you all are hearing that folks don't feel represented, does that mean maybe the person that went doesn't represent their concerns?
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Who, who appointed the committee?
That's another question.
They send, it sounds like they send a representative. Each campus figures out who they send.
We send out an email to all the principals and we say we need a representative, insurance committee representative. And we even go as far as like, send somebody, assign somebody that you know is going to be involved with it and not just somebody who's going to show up and then for the sake of just having a body there. And, and I even, even expressed to the principals, you, you can assign yourself if you want to, but just know that we want it to be representation. So don't put yourself on the committee for the sake of being there and then you can't base it on somebody else. So we did have new principals initially place themselves and then took themselves off, went back and talked to their staff.
So the, so the principals appoint the committee members.
Right, and so we even had people that were put on and then after talking to the principal like us, what their role is going to be. I think of what this is going to offer me, like, I don't even have, like, Allstate, I don't even have dental. So they went back and they do it, it was placed for these people that, you know, the campus felt like that should be on there.
In, in my view.
Transportation may be the same thing, like they're, we call the directors and we ask them to send somebody.
In my view, I have learned a lot about insurance and how the workings are within this district. We've gone through the efforts of, of investing with a professional consultant. And his recommendation has been spot on so far. And, and I truly want the best for, for every single employee here. And when I'm hearing what he's telling me or telling us, I feel, I feel, well, I feel that he's steering us in the right direction to give you the best, the best policy that, that one can get. And I'm very, you know, steered towards accepting his recommendation. And I just wish I'd get a little bit more feedback because prior to this, I got a lot of feedback about this committee and that concerned me. I got feedback about people saying, well, if the board recommended it, well, we're going to go completely against what the board wants because who is the board to speak on our behalf? And gosh darn it, I am here to, to speak on the behalf of the employees. So that's why again, I, I, I'm in favor of his recommendations because he has taught us a lot about insurance. I don't know near as much as you, Mrs. Delarious, or nor near as much as Mr. Harami or Mr., Mr. Jett, but I've been enlightened by many. And ma'am, you do have a hand up and my goodness, I want to hear you all, please.
Excuse me, with all due respect, I would just like to say that possibly a solution would be to send a survey. It is that custom, the district sometimes send surveys also. And that way you would survey all the district employees and see, you know, it would be their choice. So send a massive email, a survey to all district employees. And that way everybody's voice is heard and validated.
But they also need to get the facts prior to get to making those decisions.
Well, maybe on this survey, that can be on there at the beginning, we can read, okay?
Mr. Jett, what are the time constraints here in the event that, you know, we were to table this?
You don't have a time table?
You know, my concern, my concern has always been that in the past several years, you know, Donna employees have always gotten, have, have not gotten maybe the best possible benefit for the, for the money because there's always been the profit motive involved in here. You know, we've got Mr. Harami. Mr. Harami, one of the things that when we elected Mr. Harami, he, he agreed that he was going to help along with Mr. Jett to give our employees the best possible insurance coverage at the lowest possible price without us having to pay inflated prices, right? And based on their, their analysis, I mean, these guys are, are insurance people, you know? We're educators, or, you know, I, I consider myself an educator. You're an educator, you know? There's a, a couple of people out here in the audience that are also insurance agents that I know that understand insurance. And they understand that an insurance agent makes it in money by collecting the highest possible premium, right? And in this case, you know, Mr. Harami has foregone part of this premium in order to help our district provide our employees with the best possible insurance at the lowest possible price. At the end of the day, you know, if you're an educator, you're making a hundred thousand dollars, you know, hey, ten, twenty, thirty dollars doesn't make a difference. But you're, if you're a custodian down at the lower level, making ten dollars an hour, you know, and you're going to have to pay a lot of your, your, your paycheck toward having coverage for critical illness, heart stroke, you know, all of those things, every penny, every dime, every dollar that we can save that employee, we're making a difference. It doesn't affect you guys who are making a hundred thousand dollars a year. But I know it does affect the custodian, the maintenance people, the Christians, you know, the cafeteria workers. You know, those are the people that we have to concern ourselves about, you know? And if it means upsetting some of you guys because we made a choice to help the, the guys at the bottom end of the, of the totem pole, you know, I'm sorry, I'm going to go ahead and make that decision. And for that reason, I'm going to go ahead and accept Mr. Jett's recommendation to approve Colonial.
I have one more question. So if this, if, if Colonial was the, you get the most benefits for the least cost, why did nobody on the insurance?
why did nobody on the insurance committee vote for that? Because, again, they're the ones that are gonna be impacted.
Because when they got to the meeting, they were automatically told that Colonial was bad? You, you guys?
Some of the feedback that I got wasn't that, that it wasn't a good product. It was the service. And some of the people are willing to pay a little more because they've had better service. And so, as a consumer, that's what they're, that's what they're looking at. And because of the prior experience that they had, that is the hangup.
Yeah, we're bringing in a different agent from San Antonio. No valley connections?
Well, right, but I'm, I'm just telling you what I heard at the campus was, the service was the issue. And so, you know, they were willing to pay a little more...
To get better service.
...the experience they have with prior experience. And that's what I heard.
So, I'm on, I'm on the record today, telling you that that part of the service has been fixed. So, now you have all, you have all three. You have the, the fixed part of the service, you have the benefit, and you have the lower rate. What else could you ask for?
I second Dr. Mr. Guerrero's motion.
It is a motion by Mr. Guerrero and a second by Dr. Mary. All in favor?
In favor.
Now, I'll vote in favor. Motion carries.
A vote against.
Oppose.
Good. Okay, you got three opposed.
It was, Ms. Vena?
Thank you, Mr. Jett.
Thank you.
Moving on to HR four. Mr. President and trustees, discussion and possible action to approve proposed policy FFA local to meet federal requirements and guidelines. And this alternative with Mr. Villanueva, this is the, any HR?
Yes, sir. On the recommendation from administration, we are looking and to add, well, I'm sorry.
It's an wellness.
No, yeah, this is a different one. Back in, I believe, March, when we went over update 107, Tasby had mentioned that we need to update our wellness policy, and that was something I had told you on the board. And so, since then, the Director for Child Nutrition has updated the policy to meet the, the federal guidelines that are required, and I believe she had done it in January. So, the policy is here for y'all to approve, so we can update it on our online policy. As per Tasby.
And based on that, trustees, if there are no questions, administration recommends approval.
Will you go ahead? You guys have a chance to look at that? On, on this policy, is, can you go over some of the highlights that were, some of the things that were changed?
I would ask the director who created it. She had to develop it so she could, it was for the audit in January.
Most of the changes that were done were pretty much standardized, standardized changes. As far as the smart snacks rules that are now in place, that we just can't sell whatever items on the snack bar, bringing food from home, selling items at the campus, fundraising. I don't know if many of y'all remember, a couple of years ago, a lot of the principals used to make a lot of their money fundraising, especially right after school, and somebody at the state level came up with a bright idea of saying, you can't sell anything from midnight until thirty minutes after the last scheduled bill of that school day. So, pretty much you can't really sell anything in the morning or in the afternoon. And those needed to be stated in policy to be within TDA compliance. So, a lot of them are just pretty much standardized for the state. They need to be stated on our wellness policy, and we had to already create it and have it, have a draft done by January when we had our audit.
If, if, I mean, usually when they update a policy and its requirement, the legal policy is updated automatically. You don't necessarily have to update the local policy.
Oh, okay.
Was the legal policy updated?
Um...
This is, this is the local policy.
This is the local one.
But you're saying those are requirements by the TDA, right? So, if it's a requirement by the TDA, that means they'll go into the legal policy.
It was TDA. We have to kind of let our local people know what they can and can't do, as far as food, if you can bring food from home, sell it, when it can be given to the students, stuff like that. So, we were required to update our, and so we kind of mimic the, the legal one that already exists, pretty much.
Typically, the legal policy sets your minimum standards, and then the local policy allows a district to be more strict if they, if they choose...
That's where the Tasby update did...
That's how, that's how you, that's how local policies typically...
This policy had to meet the health, what's it called, the health nutritional guidelines. And that's right, and Tasby noticed that ours hadn't been updated in some time, so they wanted us to update it.
In essence, it did come from Tasby via to the local only.
We, we did have to put it in the local, because we do get a lot of parents that call and say, well, you know, my child took money to buy this, and they don't have, they don't sell anything in the snack bar anymore, and then we have to tell them why. The other item is because, well, you know, we don't let them sell and fundraise after school, and that was a big issue, but I think everybody kind of got used to it. And I hope it's not happening, but it shouldn't be.
The, the part about that says food will be used as a, not be used as a reward or punishment for student behavior, does that mean, like, you can't, like, pizza parties for...
They can, if the food is given for any reason, it's acceptable. So, all the principals are pretty familiar with that. If you give them the food, that's fine. You can only not segregate kids testing-wise or grade-wise. You can't say, oh, well, he's gonna get pizza because he passed a star and he didn't. That's the only thing you can't do. But if you give them pizza, any item that's given can be given throughout the day.
What's the recommendation on that?
Administration recommends approval on that.
I'll make the motion, and we approve.
There's a motion to approve by Mr. Robula, second by Mr. Guerrero. All in favor?
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. HR six.
Mr. President and trustees, HR six.
Or is it five?
It's five, it's five. Yes, sir, it's five. HR five, discussion and possible action to approve proposed policy change in BEC local as presented. Again, I, turn it over to Mr. Guerrero.
Okay, this is the policy that administration took a look at, and based on the, the many requests that we've had to, to, for bereavement purposes, and for other related leave purposes, we had to kind of alter, or I guess increase, the definition of immediate family. And since it was a local policy, we were, you know, we have the authority to do that. We just want to include more, I guess, blood relatives in those who are covered in bereavement. I, you know, they want, we want to include aunt and uncle, maternal and paternal, as, as, also to include the, the nephew and, or the niece. If your niece passes away, you're an employee, you know, you should be given, I guess, the, the freedom to go and, you know, be with the family. And so, we just want to include those two sets of, of family members.
I'll make the motion, and we approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the niece and nephew, and aunt and uncle as well?
Maternal, after the, maternal.
And there was a second by, Ms. Vena? All in favor?
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President and trustees, HR six, discussion and possible action to approve policy update 108, as per Tasby's recommendation, and Tasby, against that for Texas Association and School Board. Mr. Vena?
Yes, sir. As you all know, we get updates from time to time. This update is mainly, mainly all legal updates that are coming up, really in the areas of instruction, because of the changes in the graduation plans that we, that Ms. Castillo and Ms. Vega kind of announced earlier. So, there are changes in verbiage, there's changes in definitions from legal instructional materials to instructional resources. There is one change on the fundraising. It's, there's a policy that's, that's added that Don I S D cannot accept politically funded fundraisers. So, those are different things that have come up. The legal, it's gonna happen, because it's of the, the state law, but the local ones are mainly instructional, and, you know, just like what I said about the...
Could you clarify what you mean by politically...
If you go to your packet, almost to the very end, it's G, GK.
It's GK B?
There's GK B. Let me see, there's another GK.
Yeah, I saw that in there somewhere.
That would be on page eight.
Yeah, GK B, it just says that the district facility shall not be used for, to advertise and promote for non-school-related purposes. And the advertisement down the bottom, it says, the district shall now accept paid political advertising. It's the third to the last paragraph, it's a one-liner. These are one, that was the main distinction in the local policy that they're recommending.
That's never happened, has it?
This is an update. I don't know, sir.
The Muslim quarterback club?
Mr. President and trustees, administration recommends approval. Are there any questions?
I do. There's a motion to approve by Mr. Guerrero, second by Ms. Watts. All in favor?
Favor.
Opposed? Motion carries. Executive session? Okay, it's authorized by Texas Government Code Sections 551, dot 071, dot 072, dot 073, dot 074, dot 075, dot 076, dot 082, dot 083, and dot 084. We're gonna go into executive session. Time is eight forty-six. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, where are you?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
It is...
Why do people stay? Why do you make them stay?
It is twelve fifty-eight.
I'm sorry.
We are back from executive session.
I'm so sorry.
Do you know where your children are? You know where your children are. Children know where you are. Take it away.
Open session, item A, Mr. President and trustees, discussion and possible action to approve of superintendent's recommendation of personnel. Administration recommends to approve as discussed in executive session.
Sub move. It's a motion by Mr. Robula?
Second.
Second by Ms. Watts. All in favor?
Favor. In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President and trustees, item B, discussion and possible action to approve of district personnel. And this one, it was, has discussed in the executive session, so administration recommends approval.
Sub move. It's a motion by Mr. Robula?
Second.
Second by Ms. Watts. All in favor?
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President and trustees, item C, discussion and possible action to approve the recommendations to offer letters of reasonable assurance for employment for the 2017-2018 school year. Administration recommends, as discussed in executive session, specifically also the probationary letters that we discussed.
Okay, there's a recommendation. Need a motion?
I move, we approve.
It's a motion by Ms. Vena to approve. Do I have a second?
We're not talking about probationary contracts.
No, LOA is just, that they're gonna get a, well, the ten days that we discussed, everybody.
Which one's that?
Those one we discussed, that had the excessive absence.
Oh, yeah, I was saying that. Didn't we decide to table this?
No.
No, I'll take it.
No.
You got a second?
Yes.
Okay, second by Mr. Robula. All in favor? All opposed?
Name.
Name.
One, two, three, four. Okay, motion dies. Letter D.
Letter D, Mr. President and trustees, discussion and possible action to approve the recommendations not to offer letter of reasonable assurance for employment for the 2017-2018 school year. Again, administration recommends that discussed in executive session. Those were three individuals, the nine out of, three out of the nine.
I move.
It's a motion by Dr. Mary, second by Mr. Guerrero. All in favor?
Favor.
In favor. In favor.
Now, be opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President and trustees, letter E, discussion and possible action regarding legal implications of BBG local, and whether to amend or remove BBG local. General Counsel?
So, this is the option where we have, where you can amend the language in the BBG local to include the requirement that any funds not used for your trips be reimbursed, or you can just remove BBG local altogether, and just rely on BBG legal to control the expenditures of the board. So, you guys can...
What was your recommendation?
Well, my recommendation is just to rely on BBG legal, and just remove BBG local altogether.
I'll make that a motion.
I second that.
Here's a motion by Mr. Robula, second by Ms. Watts. All in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Letter F, Mr. President and trustees, I will, it's a board action.
This is a no-action item, it was just...
No action.
Yeah, no action.
Okay, so as noted, no action?
Action. Letter G.
General Counsel, letter G.
This was, we, we discussed, there was a TDA preliminary report, which was sent on June first of this year, basically citing three infractions by the school district, which began in November of 2014, July, and there was a second one in July of 2015, and April 28th of 2016, which involved former board members that are not sitting on the board here today. And part of the recommendation of the TDA was for the TDA to assign a monitor to supervise the school district due to these infractions. Based on our discussion, a consensus was reached that we do not, that we cannot fight this, that this is all a matter of public record, and there's no point in appealing it, and that we agree with the TDA to allow them to appoint a monitor to overlook the school district. And I recommend that this also be placed on a later-on agenda, to be discussed at length by the school board with the, the community here. But as far as the action is for today, I, we, I believe the recommendation should be that we do not appeal the, a decision of the special investigation. If anybody has any questions, or wants to take it further?
Okay, recommendations have been made.
So, I move, we accept the monitor, and we put an agenda item for our next upcoming board agenda for this. TA preliminary report.
There's a motion by Ms. Vena, second by Ms. Watts. All in...
No.
Sorry, Dr. Mary. All in favor?
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. That is?
That is.
Okay, need a motion to adjourn?
Sub move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
All opposed? Motion carries.